Okay, welcome, everybody. Our typical Monday afternoon for in June. Not, not normal at all. People are getting connected. We'll reconvene from closed session. We have nothing to report out. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, there are no adjustments.
All right, and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Chris, that would be you.
I'm gonna hold a flag up.
All right.
There you go. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic.
To the public which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God. Undisposable.
Justice for all.
Justice for all.
Mistap. Any, if there are any public comments on agenda items, please send a chat message to Karen. We will queue them up for you to speak. If you have a public comment on an agenda item, we will ask for those comments when that agenda item occurs.
Okay, I do not have any public comments as of right now.
Okay, if that changes, if someone's typing madly or whatever, Karen will let us know.
Yes, I will let you know.
We will move on to the consent agenda. Any questions? Or actually, I actually had a quick question. Give me a moment to find my comments here. Where'd it go? Gotta find them. Oh, my goodness me, so much harder to find them after I put them in there. Oh, I can't find it now. It was not anything critical. But I do appreciate getting the updates on all the handbooks for all the campuses. Thank you for putting that in. But I, whatever it was, it went, oh, 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 there it is. It was something. Oh, interesting, in the, I believe, high school. It, the whole section on volunteering is nixed out, but there are still much, many, many options in there for parent involvement around PTA and ELAC and lots of things. But I'm just curious if anyone can speak to why that whole paragraph on parent volunteering was struck.
Bill is not on the meeting, I don't believe.
Okay, we'll just follow up with that. Something to stop me from voting for it, but I'm just curious.
I, I believe the thought was with this, this year of COVID and everything. But, um, but I think we need to get clarifications.
Yeah, so we won't be having parent volunteers on any campus, at least at the beginning, till things change. That said, they could potentially still be active in a group because, for instance, ELAC is zooming, you know, so you can still attend and be active. You just can't volunteer. So that might have been the thing, but that's me.
I'll just follow with that, okay.
I have one question on 9.2B, and I can't see it because my computer doesn't work.
That also is not there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah, we had talked about that at the last meeting.
I apologize, Mike, that I didn't have that done.
It's okay.
Okay. Anything else, or do you want to have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
On second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on. Okay, just student learning 10-1A, HUSD reopening and planning for the 2021 school year.
We are very busy. The district administration and a lot of teachers working around the clock, it feels like, to come up with plans for reopening. And we are getting closer in the process. Today, we had our first negotiation session with HADA. It was productive. We were able to list out some concerns that we, we all have and things that we need to work through. At this point, I think it's safe to say that we anticipate, and I, with a caveat, and I'll talk to that in a minute, that we will be opening in the fall in a hybrid environment, most likely with students attending as a rule, two days a school week, and then doing some distance learning activities on the off days. Again, that still needs to be negotiated and, of course, approved by the board. And there's a lot of moving parts. For instance, what does student lunch look like? We can't have large groups of students together. But some things we do know, we are, you know, students will be masked. Staff will be wearing masks. We'll have actually face guards also available for staff. PPE, personal protective equipment, is a lot easier to get now. We have been stockpiling it, for lack of a better term. The state is actually buying the first 60 days' worth of PPE for schools around the state. So that's gonna be in mid-July. So we feel really good about having masks and face guards and hand sanitizer and things like that on hand. We'll have active screening of students in the, every day when they come to school. So we're not quite sure if, yeah, we're looking at potentially using the infrared thermometers and/or buying some scanners that are similar to what you might see in an airport where people walk by and it takes your temperature. It actually might be more cost-effective to buy those than to have dedicated personnel time with multiple peoples, you know, using these thermometers. So lots of things like that. There will be, we're gonna ask parents to also help with screening, so, you know, checking your kid for potential symptoms every day and not sending them when there's a question. Staff will be doing the same thing. We're not gonna ask for specific information from staff other than that they're self-screening. We, we will be doing, obviously, a hand washing campaign, for lack of a better term. So in, you know, in the younger and older grades, getting kids to wash and sanitize their hands multiple times throughout the day. That is the best way, besides wearing a mask, to stop the spread of the coronavirus. And so we're gonna work on that. One thing I do wanna talk to is, we are all concerned about learning loss, right? We cannot replicate a normal school environment, five days a week with your teacher in a distance environment. It's just not, not possible. We can do our best, and we did that last spring. But we recognize that there's gonna be groups of students who lose out on, I mean, every student's gonna lose out on learning and some more extensively than others. And to that end, we are working hard to potentially find a way where we could have five days a week for all of our K through second grade and maybe even third grade students. Those are the foundational years. It's when kids are learning to read. And we are really on the cusp with class size numbers of being able to do that and still maintain social distancing. And so it will require some investment and some, some more teacher, teaching staff to hit those, those numbers that we need in classes to be able to safely social distance. But we think we're, we're on the brink of it. We've been working on it for the last few weeks. I know the trustees are in favor. You can all speak to that in a second. But we are, at this point, waiting for the state budget to be approved and see what comes out of Sacramento. All indications are positive around that, as it would affect opening K3 every day of the week. So I'm excited by the possibility and really hopeful that, you know, we might have some closure around this by the end of this week, if not next week early. So I'm excited to share that. Again, it's not a guarantee. Things can change. But we do see, and I would love to be able to do it for everybody, honestly, but it's obviously a funding issue. But we do see that post-K3, and if you're gonna start somewhere, it needs to be in those foundational years, in my opinion. So any other questions from the trustees or public comments around reopening? A lot fill up in the air. And I, you know, I'm a parent. I have two boys at the high school still. They're as anxious as anybody. You know, they're actually really disappointed. It's not gonna be every day. They wanna get back to school and see their teachers and their friends. But I, I wanna be the first to say that I know there's a lot of uncertainty. And it's tough as a parent. It's tough as an educator. It's tough as a teacher. We are working really hard, harder than we've worked in any summer ever, to figure all of this out. And, and a lot of the things you learn about in the newspaper or online, I'm learning about exactly the same time as you are. Things are constantly shifting every day. And communication channels aren't always good from the state down to the schools, through the counties, et cetera. So I am extremely appreciative of your patience and, and want you to know that we are doing everything we can to make the best possible for a school that does two things, gets kids back in school learning and keeps our staff and our students safe. Those are our two overall overarching goals. Anyway, trustees, did you have any questions or anything you wanted to add? Or actually, was there a public comment before we go to the trustees?
Oh, yeah. Karen, are there any?
Yes, there is one public comment. There possibly might be two, but I, I, I need to check in with one person.
Okay.
Actually, there's, now there's another one. Okay, so the first person to speak is Corinne Ephrem. And I will unmute her. Okay. All right.
Okay, am I on? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hi, I feel like I'm a regular here.
Welcome back.
Hi. So I was just thinking about, I, I wrote this in my survey, too. I wrote a really long response to the survey. But one of the things that I was concerned about with reopening is just sort of looking at the mental health implications of reopening in this way. I'm, in particular, thinking about my kids in terms of the high school. And what I was saying is that I have an incoming freshman, who is concerned just about coming into high school to start and the nervousness of coming into a high school situation and then coming into, with the possibility that she may not be with any of her friend group. And I recognize it's really a great opportunity for kids to expand their horizons and get to know new students, different kids. But I also think it's important that they have some consistency and some normalcy. And if there's any way to consider how you're grouping students, so there's a diversity, of course, but also so that maybe they have at least one or two friends that come on the same day. Just, just thinking about that kind of component of this strange situation we're in as well.
Appreciate that, Corinne, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
It's a lot for an incoming freshman, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Another comment, Karen?
Yes, I have a comment from Ever Flores. I just need to find him. There he is. Whoop, I did the wrong person. I unmuted Erin, but, or, yeah. Okay, there's Mr. Flores.
All right, hi, Ever. I think you're on.
Took a while. So I just wanted to reiterate what Corinne said. I mean, mental health issues are now because of, of this pandemic. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, that, and I'm speaking as a school council right now. And I has had a precedent that I just want the school district to, to determine what sort of things we can do for, for those students who are great, you know, in great need of mental health services.
Uh-oh.
You froze, Ever.
Ever, you froze there for a few seconds. In great need of mental health services. Can you repeat that, please?
Connections are stable again. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that, that we took into consideration students' mental health issues because we don't know exactly what this, you know, few months have been like for a lot of our students, especially those who are at need of services. There's been a lot of discussion at the county level that CPS has received very few phone calls because, you know, schools are the primary, you know, contacts to CPS. And I just wanna, I want, I want you guys to be cognizant of that, that a lot of our students may be in households that are not, you know, the most welcoming. So I just want you to, to start thinking in terms of how, how we can support our students who are thinking, who are coming back in the fall. And then the, the second part, I'm gonna say from my head of report. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ever.
Other comments, Karen?
Yes, I'm actually gonna unmute Mike Ephrem and have him speak.
Hello.
Hi, Mike.
Hey, we got you. All right, I, I have a question. Does the district, or what is the district plan if a teacher or a student in a school becomes COVID-positive? What is the school plan for the whole school? I mean, do we, I don't know. That's, that's a question for you guys to ponder, I guess, but maybe you've already figured it out. If a single student or a single teacher becomes COVID-positive.
Right.
Okay.
We can pick that up during the board discussion.
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other comments, Karen?
Any other comments? I do not see any at this moment, so we are good.
We will have a board discussion. If people have additional comments, let Karen know, and we can squeeze you in at some point, I'm sure, as we go. So, board comments.
Well, I wanted to just say how much I appreciate being able to look at K2, K3, those foundational years and having school every day for those kids. Not, not only educationally, but also in terms of, in terms of their safety in having a caring adult taking care of them. And I, I, I just think it's really important. And I, I really appreciate that the board is supporting this wholeheartedly. Thank you, fellow trustees.
Chris, could you speak to maybe a couple of just the main issues why that can't go up the ladder? Or why it would be, why it's challenging to, to have that for every level?
Social, so, I mean, there are guidelines from the state and the county, right, that come from both educational and public health officials. And all of the guidelines at this juncture recommend us maintaining the six feet of social distance. I, for one, am not willing to go against state and county guidelines. I don't know if the board would be. I think there are school boards around the state that are actually contemplating not following guidelines. But I think that it unnecessarily exposes staff and students and, you know, obviously exposes the district to some liability. So guidelines right now are to maintain six feet of social distancing in classrooms. And so that precludes us from having more than, we, we believe, we've had, uh, our maintenance team with the administrators look at our classrooms. We think we can do 15 students safely at six feet in each classroom. With the union on that to, to agree on a number. And so that really becomes our, the point at which we can have kids come full-time is when we can have class sizes of 15 or less at elementary, partially because we're a community-funded district and we are in better shape financially than others. And we haven't had transfer students, so we don't have large classes. We're real close to 15 in, actually, in first grade, we're there pretty much. In first, in kindergarten, we would need one more teacher. In second grade, we need one more teacher, and possibly in third grade. That said, we still need to see how many kids are gonna come out for possible voluntary distance learning. The, when you start getting into fourth and fifth grade, we're talking about needing two or three more teachers. And then the same thing into sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And so it just becomes a financial issue. You know, we'd be in the millions of dollars that we don't have to be able to pull it off district-wide. But because we're on the cusp in this, in the lower grades, we're able to take a look at it. And, and like I said, I think those, those are the foundational grades where that learning loss is gonna be worse than possibly in any other grade. So it behooves us to look there. So that's, that's the why. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also, I, I know you've done at least two parent surveys, is that right?
Yeah, we did one kind of general parent survey on how distance learning went, what they were thinking into the future. And then, you know, the future changed in two weeks. So we do another one. This one, we're actually asking for more specific feedback with a name because we want to know, you know, there, there are parents who simply are not gonna send their kids to school until this whole pandemic is over, right? And so we wanna know what those parents are and what kind of numbers are we looking at so that we can look at class size and what grades can we bring back full-time, et cetera, et cetera. And then hopefully be able to provide a voluntary distance learning option for families that wanna self-farm team with their kids. So that was the point of the survey, along with getting parent feedback on how things have gone and what you wanna see happen all, et cetera, et cetera. We are gonna have some parent focus groups happening next week on the planning that we're having, just to get some feedback. Potential to do some sort of forum where parents could, you know, send us some questions and we can answer what we have right now. I feel like we need to get a little part of the education's road to have plans a little bit more definitively defined before we do that. But we're close and, and we can get more information out to parents. But we do wanna hear from folks. And that's why we've taken multiple instances to get their feedback, so.
Well, I thank you for that 'cause that's obviously really critical in terms of just where people are in their thinking and their planning and whatnot. And also to be sharing information back out, even though it's changing
Yeah.
moment by moment, day by day. Go ahead, Mike.
Um, just to what Super Dennis said about, you know, having the forums, et cetera. And I would encourage you and, you know, do it the way you want. But I was gonna say weekly, but perhaps bi-weekly, having something. And I, as you know, I'm not Mr. Techie. So whether it's Facebook or, or whatever, something that, even if it's a 10-minute little update on what we know today, which may not be much more than we knew two weeks ago, but just so parents, because they're worried, they're concerned, as we all are, about what's going to happen come August, September, whatever. So I would encourage you, again, one of our goals is communication. So just to put something out in a weekly, bi-weekly basis to the parents that, so you can say, this is what we know today. It may change tomorrow, but this is where we are. And again, it all depends on where the virus is at this point. And again, it's, could certainly change the day before we open. But again, communication, I guess, is what I'm saying.
We did send, I mean, the latest was last, just Friday. We sent a note home to parents that pretty much was the introduction that I gave. And, you know, says, this is what we know and this is what we anticipate, and we really don't know anything. So, but, you know, I agree with you. Communication and trying to fill the void as much as possible is important, so.
I also wonder if it might be interesting to have that information more broadly available to the community. Sometimes I find, I don't know, people are talking and community members who aren't getting, aren't parents, then make their assumptions, which can turn into strange rumors. I don't know. It just feels like there might be interest in what's happening in the schools beyond the parents.
Post things to social, if that helps, yeah.
Send it to the newspaper. Because they'll post it.
Yeah, Catherine's on, and she's really good about getting information out there, so.
Yeah, for sure.
If you're listening, you know, when Chris said out, if you can somehow get it in the paper, at least portions of it, that would be, be great for the community.
I do wanna talk about, we are, we are anticipating kind of creating a reopening guide, you know, that would be approved by the board. The nurses, we have two nurses that work in the district, both of them part-time. One of them are actually, so we have nurses four days a week in the district typically. We are gonna extend that to have a nurse in the district five days a week for this next school year. But they have been working diligently with both the county and public health, and Diane Conger, as the Director of Student Services, to start this guide. And so in the guide, there will be protocols that basically point to public health and public health protocols when and if a student is exposed or has coronavirus for a staff member. And so there will be contact tracing certain groups that have to be isolated, depending on who they are. So it'll be all very clear and completely aligned with public health instructions. So it's not something that we're just left to invent on our own. I don't, I don't have it in front of me right now to be able to say exactly what happens when a staff member is exposed. But I know that it is very clearly delineated in the public health guidelines, so.
Is that already been set up? So we could, I mean, someone could go and find that information? Or is that something they're still working on?
Right now, in the, the County Office of Education's roadmap that they issued, has actually some of the guidelines there. It's a 43-page document or 45-page document. And state has a little bit also. And then we're, we're still in, we meet weekly with the nurses, and then they go out and field questions with public health. And we're in the middle of drafting this guide. So we anticipate probably, I don't know, Diane, maybe a week or two, and we'll have at least part of it done.
Maybe that would be nice to have that link on our district website, too, so people, when they do have that question.
Oh, yeah, and we'll just, well, once it's finished, we will disseminate it everywhere, so.
Right.
And that'll have really clear guidelines, what happens if somebody is.
Exactly, yeah.
We're working on a flow chart. You know, I mean, we couldn't, we're trying to be very, very specific. So there is no, you know, room for interpretation.
Right.
But some of this, as Chris pointed out, will just be guidance also from the county office.
Yes.
So we have to wait for them.
Yeah. Well, and I appreciate that you're focusing on the health and safety of students and staff. I mean, it's not one at the cost of the other. It has to be everybody being safe and comfortable and an environment where kids can learn, feel comfortable. And as awkward as all of it is, you know, it is, it's the way it's gonna look. And I just, just listening to you talk about, I don't know, just, you know, the hand washing and this and that. The details of this planning are overwhelming. I mean, I have a tiny business, so, having one classroom. And I am paralyzed with indecision about if and how to reopen. So I don't even fathom the, the details and of the flow charts and, I mean, that you guys are having to deal with. And I appreciate, I know, the extra time and the effort that you're putting into just digesting it all and figuring out what's, how do we educate our kids and keep up the standards that we have and keep everybody safe? So, and it's, we can't give up one of those forever. We can't.
No.
I, I wanna also just interject, because I'm not sure if the board is totally aware of this, but who we have on staff in terms of nursing is like a gift. And Kristin, the nurse that works three days a week, she's also working at Kaiser. So she is on the front lines, you know, she is giving aerosol treatments. So she's able to bring back, you know, some really good suggestions. And I'm really appreciating her. And then Varsity is a physician's assistant. She's got that sort of really solid clinical background and the ability to really dissect this information. And so I feel very, very comfortable with them analyzing our protocols and coming up with something very solid for us.
That's great, excellent, very nice.
That is, yeah.
Excellent, that's really good to hear.
Yeah.
Any other, Karen, do we have any other comments on this topic? Oh.
I do have one, one comment, and it is.
Can we do that, and then Jamie will go to you?
Oh, Jamie, wanna, no, please, go ahead, public comment. Okay, so Maria Hadley has a comment. I'm going to unmute her right now. Can you hear me?
Hi, Maria.
Hi, Maria.
So I just had a question about the junior high. I had several parents ask me about the fifth graders going to the junior high. They're concerned about that transition from one teacher to seven teachers. And so I'm wondering if you guys have talked about that, if you have a plan in mind or not yet.
Thank you, Maria. So, Chris, how will the high school and the junior high be dealing with multiple periods and class, I mean, kids moving around?
You know, in a typical year, we do Team H JH, and the high school usually does the community building type exercises to help incorporate and get kids to meet.
Chris, we can't hear you. Yeah, you're very faint all sudden. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So in a typical year, we have a lot of things going on, like Team H JH days, or the high school does community building days. Neither of those are feasible in, in COVID. And so there is a lot yet to be determined, to be totally, completely honest. I know one thing the high school is looking at is doing some advisory period activities that are incorporating this new curriculum that Diane's gonna talk to, social emotional curriculum called Y Try. Same thing will be happening at the junior high. That is, you know, it's social emotional curriculum, but it community builds at the same time. This whole executive functioning task of having seven teachers for a, for a fifth grader is not new. That's something they've been having to do for the last few years. And it's quite, quite honestly, something we continue to work on at the junior, and we'll need to continue to address. Need to continue to address. Um, we're not quite far enough down the road to have solid plans on community building and COVID for entering freshmen and sixth graders. But, um, it is definitely on the list and things that our administrators know that they're going to have to get super creative with. So it's a, it's a good.
Chris, what about just actual classes and different periods? And how will that look across the multiple days of the week?
So that's all what's being discussed still.
Okay.
So we're trying to have.
Could be.
We're, we're trying to have minimal transitions. So, um, you know, I kind of came down hard on one of the schools where they were talking about having seven classes a day for the two days you're there and, and just number of transitions and the epidemic logical nightmare that creates is not okay. So, um, we, we are looking at having kids in blocks. Going to three, maybe four at the tops classes a day and we're still working on creative structures to try and limit cohort. That kind of thing. So a lot still being discussed and needs to be negotiated. Um, and we, I am in contact with the other unified superintendents in Sonoma County, um, and they're all dealing with the same issue. It's really complicated in secondary as opposed to elementary in terms of cohorting. So. So much, much to be determined still.
Jamie, did you have a question or a comment?
I just wanted to kind of follow up on whatever had asked about with the social emotional piece, just, you know, with the campus counselors, like maybe ever has some ideas that they've, they've already talked through that they're planning to do. Or with Diane, I know you had mentioned the Y try, but is there, is there a strategy yet that you can share with us ever or Diane or about those kids coming in and not only academically getting kind of a handle on things, but us getting a pulse on how they're doing.
Say that we will push that discussion to the 10, one C, the social emotional learning and the plans. Is that okay? Cause it kind of.
Great.
Wraps. Drives a little deeper there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other comments, concerns, questions about reopening?
I don't have anything on the chat.
I just want to say that we understand that it's fluid. I mean, what you say today may, you know, circumstances might be a little bit different. So I think we have to be open and flexible. And as you know, it can share, like, here's what we plan for now. Cause it's just, I think people just like to know kind of what are we thinking, um, even though it might not be the set in stone. So.
I agree. And I think like even talking about the K two or K three. And the plans that we have now, knowing from Sacramento, things could change. We'll hope don't, but this is the kind of way we're thinking about things now. And I, that's a really good thing. I agree to be proactive about communicating.
Let's say something, I just, it's all about, uh, being COVID wise, I guess, wear a mask, keep your social distance, not just in our Zoom meetings, but all the people that are listening, spread that word. Cause the better we are at that, the more sooner we'll be.
And I appreciate all the time and energy that, you know, teachers, district staff, whomever is putting in. I know this is not your summer vacation. Doesn't feel like your summer vacation. So we really appreciate that across the board. I know teachers are, I'm sure, planning. If Plan A and Plan B in their mind, when they'd like to be just down at the beach, you know, or whatever. So we recognize and appreciate that.
Yeah. For sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So shall we move on to the next item on the agenda unless there's something else? Okay. Um, item 10, one B, potential development of ethnic studies.
Yeah. So Karen's going to project the presentation on the screen. There we go. Okay. So I wanted to have a board discussion about this. We've, we've sort of talked about it here and there. And I think the time is now to get a little more serious in our discussion. I was fortunate enough to be part of a community conversation or a conversación comunitaria last week with Corazon Hillsburg and, um, and I'm excited about what could be here. And so I wanted to walk you through the case for ethnic studies in Hillsburg Unified. Go to the next slide, Karen. There you go. So I attached in the board packet, an article from, uh, CSBA. Uh, specifically for board members around, um, ethnic studies. And this is just some highlights from it, you know, research. Pretty overwhelmingly clear that, uh, for students of color, ethnic studies does a number of good things. I'm not going to read through this, but not only does it make them more engaged, it results in higher levels of achievement and graduation rates, attendance, GPA, et cetera, et cetera. Um, it's a win across the board and, and the research and evidence is pretty clear on that. Go to the next slide, Karen. So why now in Hillsburg Unified? Um, and I want to just clarify what I'm talking about. When I talk about ethnic studies, I'm not simply talking about a class at the high school. It definitely could be part of an ethnic studies, uh, curriculum. But, but I do really think that we owe it to our students as a district that is almost 65% Latino to look at our curriculum and how it serves or doesn't serve them. And how ethnocentric it may be in its approach, uh, and how it doesn't represent their viewpoints necessarily. Um, and so in our, in our journey as a system through equity. Um, and this journey we've been on for a number of years now, um, you know, we've taken some big steps. We've combined the elementary schools to eliminate the artificial separation of students that was happening by ethnicity. Um, and we are completely, um, committed to continuing to look at our system. The board gives me direction on that. I don't, I don't doubt their commitment, um, but to continue to have the lens of equity in everything that we do. So I think the time is now, given the situation that we've been in for the last few years of really trying to improve how we address issues of equity and how we meet our students' needs. To take a hard look at our curriculum and see how, like it says here, historically ethnocentric it is and how it has failed to represent them in their community, um, and find ways that we can engage them better in the curriculum. And the first step in that is really getting our stakeholders to be involved in it. If your work, if you're familiar with the work of Paulo Freire. Who was a renowned educator out of the world. It's all about consciousness raising and engaging folks in their own specific context to create change. And we saw that firsthand in our district, uh, you know, in the movement to move away from the charter school, right? Um, it was, it was loud and clear from parents when we engaged with them that there was a lot of hurt and frustration and need for change. Um, and we may see the same thing with curriculum and in the very least owe it to them to let them be a part of constructing a new curriculum. Continue. So some strategies, um, you know, we're in the infancy stage of this. Uh, I, I really wanted just to bring it up as a preliminary discussion with next steps in my mind, um, would be to work with Corazon Hillsburg and the Hillsburg Education Foundation to identify and fund some experts to help guide and support a process. On the conversation I was on, on Facebook, there were some consultants from Acosta Educational Partnership. Um, Dr. Carlos Acosta is, uh, a professor at University of Arizona, um, who does this work. With consultants that actually are situated in California. In fact, they're in Napa. Um, with school districts and communities. Um, they're actually engaged with Santa Rosa City right now to construct their ethnic studies. Um, so I have a preliminary meeting with them next week on Tuesday, just to talk about what could be, what is the kind of work that they do, how they could potentially support us. It would take some funding and that's where Corazon and Hef might be able to help out. But the next step would be if we work with them or another group to adopt a co-participation process. Similar to that Ferrarian, um, model that collaborates and partners, uh, with the community to design and implement a curriculum. Um, so community dialogue to raise awareness and increase in the curricular design process. And I see this as a multi-year process. This is not something that's going to happen overnight. Um, but would be, you know, potentially in the first year, we could create either a standalone class at the high school that's A to G approved and potentially a graduation requirement or, um, integrate ethnic studies into some of our other classes that we have at the high school. I'm not exactly sure what it would look like, but um, I think the high school is a logical place to start and then to work backwards from there. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. I wanted to give the board an opportunity to express their opinions and feelings about headed in this direction. I see it as a, a great next step in our equity journey. And obviously with the national context and conversation happening around racism right now, there's a lot of momentum that would support moving in this direction. And, and that's what, that's a lot of the reason that I think the time is now. I want to thank Ever Flores for making the comment last meeting and and a good conversation last week on Facebook with what I saw and also folks. Um, so I'm really, really excited about it. Any, uh, public comment or, um, if not, we can go to board discussion?
Karen, is there any public comment on this?
I, uh, there is not any public comment. Oh, actually, yes, we do. Um, Ever Flores, let me unmute Mr. Flores. Okay. Sorry. It's a little different when I have my, I'm sharing my screen to find people there.
Ha, yeah.
Yeah. There's Mr. Flores. Okay.
Well, I just want to say thank you for expediting the, uh, the process of making sure that we have ethnic studies as the graduation requirement. And I, I do understand that, you know, probably it'll start as an elective. Um, sort of class, you know, until it becomes a graduation requirement. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up is that, you know, it, it let's, let's not forget, you know, how we got here. There's been a lot of hurt in our community. There's been a lot of hurt, you know, throughout the United States about how people of color or black indigenous people have been treated. And I just wanted to, to, to make sure that, you know, even though that, even though the board is doing the right thing, there's, there, there's a lot of work to be done here in Hillsburg in regards of parity and equity. And I just want you to understand that, you know, this is a great first step. Um, but it's just, it, you know, it's, it's, it's one step and in many steps to make sure that we heal. Uh, in, in terms of what has happened here in Hillsburg. Uh, what happened to the mayor is, you know, it's, it is, it's just a symptom of what other things have happened here in the district as well, you know? Uh, the silence of, you know, of people of color who have been mistreated, you know, throughout the years. Uh, the blatant racism of showing, um, Confederate flags in, in our school, this in our school, in the schools and, and, and and consequences, uh, versus hiding our students of, you know, of Mexican descent, displaying their Mexican ply, uh, flags and having those students have consequences. So, um, you know, as I talk to students and as, and as I talk to other, um, I just want to reiterate the fact that there, there's still a lot of healing to be done and, and part of all of us. And I just don't want you guys to, to, to forget, uh, that, that there's still lots of work.
Thank you, Ever. Thank you, Ever. Any other public comments on this item?
No other public comment.
Okay.
I think that Erin Fender, she asked me to unmute her and I don't.
Oh, yeah.
Did I, Erin? Are you, uh? Let me look for her again.
I was unmuted earlier, but now I don't see her on my screen, my small screen.
She is. Okay. I'll do it again.
Karen, can you take down the?
Yeah.
Thing so that we can see people. Good idea.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes. Yes. Hi, Erin.
Okay, so. Hi, I'm actually in transit, uh, so I'm going to keep my, uh, photograph on there and not make you guys carsick. But I, I just wanted to, you know, as the, as the director of curriculum and instruction, give my full support for this. Um, you know, we've been kind of waiting for the CDE to make a move on this. Um, they've developed some very basic, uh, guidelines for an ethnic studies curriculum. We've all kind of been waiting with bated breath for this. You know, what the state calls model curriculum for ethnic studies. Um, but I think the time is right. I'm excited about partnering, particularly with, uh, Corazon Hillsburg. I think it's the right thing to do for, to be a community partnership. Um, and I'm also excited about the K-12 endeavor and that this isn't just an elective class that kids take when they get to high school. But thinking deeply as a community effort and getting community organizations involved with this planning process. And also looking at it, uh, through our entire lens of our educational community. So just wanted to give it my full support and, you know, add a couple of highlights that are on my mind as we endeavor into this.
Thank you. Thanks, Erin.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, there is not any other comments, so.
Thank you, Karen. Board, fellow board members?
I'll speak. Um, I'm super excited about this. I think it's long overdue. Um, I do want to thank, um, the teachers that did infuse equity and ethnic studies into their curriculum any way that they could, um, because I know that some teachers did that. And I just wanted to do a shout out to Mike Berry, who recently passed away, May 27th. Because he was one of those teachers that brought in different perspectives and points of views and made people think um, about it, you know, different, um, through a different lens. Um, so I'm super excited that this is going to be curriculum that, um, more students will, will get intentionally. And that's really exciting to me. So thank you.
So I, I just wanted to commend the idea that we're going to be looking at our curriculum in total and and correcting any ethnocentric, white, white centric, uh, curriculum to, um, being a history major, I think it's really critical that we look at the real history, not what our white European forebears prefer their history to be. Very much, very much like the myths that are generated, um, about civil war. And it's time for it to, to be, uh, to be a more true kind of a curriculum. So I'm thrilled. Glad we're doing this and I'm glad we're looking at that perspective, not just adding something to it, but really looking at how the material is presented and how in our, in our literature, in our, um, everything. Be math, science.
Yes.
All grade levels. So I'm glad that we're taking that look.
Yeah. And I'm also glad that we're, that we're not waiting for the state, that we are moving forward without having somebody else telling us what to do. It feels really authentic and, um, that's really exciting. But thank you for that too.
I agree. I really like the, that we've partnered with community, with Corazon and a community to make this happen. I think that is something we need to be doing more and more. This is not dealing with racism. It's not something the school district can do alone or in an island or in a bubble or whatever. We have to be doing this as part of a bigger community effort. And, um, this is a lovely way to start that process. Have a question, if this, if, if this is focused entirely on curriculum or does it also kind of bleed over into things like building empathy and maybe team building and things? Or is that not really part of this?
I think it could be, uh, you know, there's a lot to be determined still. Um, but definitely that would be the point of some of the curriculum, I would, I think. And, um, so, yeah, no, definitely.
Okay. I think, I think ethnic studies have done well. Totally hits on the empathy piece.
Ah. Good.
Director Fender didn't, should talk about CD, but theoretically they were going to have this for this coming year. And it's been postponed another year. Um, and ever, if you're listening and I'm hoping that, um, you're aware of this and that maybe you can work with CTA to push uh, the CDE to, uh, move a little faster and a little broader, I think, with the guidelines that I've read are basically the one semester course at the high school that at some point will become required. But I'd also like to say that, um, in contrast to that or in addition to that, um, not just a high school class. But, and it's been said, but we begin everywhere. I mean, obviously high school classes, I'm not sure it's easier, but you can build a curriculum. But I really think we need to begin at every level, infusing ethnic studies. Kindergarten, first, second, third, all the way through 12th grade, um, in many subjects. And I mentioned science and math and history is, history is easy, um, English, um, and go on and on, arts. All of these should be taken in. And then I finally want to say, when, when we talk about ethnic studies, ethnic studies. We need to look at what it is, the white ethnicity or the, you know, the white ethnocentric, um, Hispanic. We also have to look at all the other, or not all, but many other cultures and ethnics, because if we look at two, then we tend to say, well, one is this and one is that, which is which. But when you begin to look at a variety of different ethnicities and their culture and their behaviors, et cetera, two things happen. One, you see the differences and you have, whoa, we're, and you also see that we're awful lot alike. But I, but I encourage it not just. But I, but I encourage it not just to be a, a bifold, if you will, I'll look at, or at ethnic studies. It, you know, it should not be a Latinx look, but it should be a very broad look. And again, across the curriculum and across grade levels. And I'm thrilled that we're partnering with the community.
I think Ever, you wanna, is Ever locked out?
Did you want to comment? Okay.
Thank you. Just a couple of, so there is a, an assembly bill, I believe is AB 331, that was in the appropriations committee last week. And it's been a while, and that's the ethnic studies bill. So anything you can do as elected, as local elected officials, that would be great. I think it was proposed by Representative Medina of LA. And then the thing, intersectionality is part of ethnic studies. So, uh, you know, you're right, it won't have just a Latinx lens to it. It will have a multicultural lens to, to, to the studies, you know, Native American, African-American, Latinx and, and other cultures. And, and the population that we tend to overlook too is students who, people with disabilities. But a, a program like this, you know, a key component of it is the intersectionality of races.
Thank you. Excellent.
I, we have one more public comment.
Thank you, Karen.
And that is from Catalina Diaz. And let me find Catalina. She's here, so. There she is. Did I unmute you, Catalina?
Not yet. Looks like she's still muted.
He might have to now do, because I've, I've, I've pressed the button.
You might have to accept.
There.
Yeah. So I was going to go back and thank Ever, Chris, for being at the Corazon Community Talk, which I also logged into. And one of the things that Crystal also brought up and Mike has brought up, that one class might not be enough, is just changing the school culture. Just as you walk in the hallways and you just looked at campuses that is really represented. So I, besides the class, I would like to encourage and ask the board, and I know Erin is always on board for interdisciplinary projects that address this. Club activities that might address this to just enhance the overall participation in her school. Thank you.
Thank you, Catalina.
Thank you.
Well, and on that line too, I think that obviously there are folks that have some really great experiences and really, really great ideas. That it's going to come from within, kind of that authentic piece that, that Areselli spoke to. I think, you know, we, we need to be looking for, hey, we're, we're open, we're, we're, this is new, this is in its infancy. Everybody who has, you know, experience with teaching it or has some ideas, probably better than what one or two people can come up with. So this, again, is collaborative, collaborative, collaborative. And as Areselli spoke of, there's been teachers that have done a really great job doing this throughout the years. And what does that look like? What piece can they add? So just to be open and flexible and have it be a, a changing, growing opportunity. Until we get set on something that we really think is going to be representative of what we want to be putting out there. But I'm excited. It's gonna be, it's great.
And I think, well, you know, you can start small. You don't have to have the whole curriculum in order to infuse it, you know? You can start with some pieces and just start doing it.
Right, starting with the high school and then.
Starting everywhere, starting everywhere.
Yeah, I, I would say that Greta in the library at HES.
And now she's amazing.
Reads with, uh, you know, different, you know, kind of how Ever spoke, that the library, the Learning Commons at HES is where intersectionality happens. So she does a fantastic job of teaching the kids about African-American viewpoints and historical figures and Latino as well. So she, she's been pushing it for as long as she's been in there and will continue to do it and has been a catalyst, I think, for change on that campus and in the district. So kudos to her, so.
Yeah, for sure.
All right, we have one more comment from Maria Hadley. Okay.
I just wanted to say that I have really appreciated working with all the former immersion teachers at the different elementary grade levels that I've been in to help raise my awareness of multiculturalism and celebrating different cultural events. And it's just been such a pleasure to have them, you know, enrich me as a teacher and then be able to pass that along to the students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Well, thank you too for wanting to add that piece. I mean, it, you know, you're willing to ask and then incorporate. I think that's, that's a great thing, great collaboration.
Yeah, I'd love to see our multicultural day return with singing and dancing and all that other stuff that we used to do.
Absolutely.
Someday when we're all together again.
Awesome.
So many things to celebrate then. Any other comments or questions from fellow trustees? Now, it sounds like, wow, more than full support to this, make it happen, you know, amongst all the other stuff we're doing.
Well, this is a lot more exciting and there will be stuff happening in July. I'll keep you updated and expect it to be on the agenda again in, in August, just for an update.
Okay. Thank you.
It's Chris.
All right. Moving on to 10-1C, social and emotional learning for Hillsburg Unified School District, and I believe this is Diane.
Yes, and let me get this going again.
So I have a very, very short presentation that just basically reviews our proposed curriculum. So you can move on to the next slide.
Okay.
So we're sort of taking a two-pronged approach, one at the elementary and one at the secondary. The elementary is going to use a curriculum called Ruler and definitely an evidence-based program. They'd like to call it an approach as opposed to a curriculum based out of Yale University. And for those of you who are familiar with Mark Brackett, he's getting a lot of press these days. And he strongly believes that every student should have the skill, be taught the skill of emotional intelligence. You know, be aware that emotions matter and learning how to, and the ruler stands for a very specific set of skills that they try to incorporate into their approach. And that's recognizing your emotions, understanding, labeling, expressing and regulating. And I think what makes, what sets this apart to me, and the principals sort of looked at this sort of continuing toolbox. And then also looked at the additional components of second step as we landed on Ruler. And what, what separates this in my mind is that you, you not only learn that emotions are okay, but you learn why you have the emotion in the first place or why the other person might be having this emotion. And so I think it really gets at that empathy building and that social awareness piece that we're trying to incorporate, especially in our younger students. So, um, you know, there's much, much, much more to say about this, but I'm, in the interest of time, I'm trying to keep it a little bit short. So I gave you a link to their website, which has a lot of videos and things like that. So I can tell you, we heard loud and clear that we weren't interested in a whole bevy of consultants marching through the district. And so that was one of the criteria when we looked at this. And so it's a train the trainer model and the team starts training in July. This is unique in that the first year, while you can start bringing it to students, the first year is mostly focused on staff. Making sure that the staff completely understand the principles, making sure that they use them in their day-to-day interactions, staff meetings, common planning time, things like that. And so while you can rule it out as staff feel more comfortable, you know, probably in January. And we'll be spending a lot of time, at least in the fall, getting the staff up to speed. So.
And Diane, these are classroom skills, right? Teachers can use to diffuse situations, to, um, help a child through a rough spot, through, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you know, it's, um, I don't mean to imply that teachers can't immediately start using it. But we want to practice with each other before we bring it to the students. Because I'm going to believe that Yale really has this stuff down. And so when I asked them, well, why can't we just get started? You know, why isn't it just a sort of a lesson and a guidebook and all of that? And she said, well, actually, until staff are totally familiar and comfortable with this, it can do more harm than good. So instead of just rushing into it, I think we're going to take our time and take the temperature. And there are definitely metrics in place, so we know when we're ready to bring it to the students. Much of this is already online, so any of the activities and things that staff might want to do if they're in a distance learning sort of environment by chance, they can do online with the students.
That's great.
Yeah, it's, I'm really, I'm really excited about this. I, I think it's just the next, um, step. And I think it really, I heard Ever say earlier, you know, what are we going to do about the mental health of the students? And, you know, how are we going to bring that to the forefront? I'm worried about that, but I'm also worried about the mental health of our staff. You know, how do we bring them back and build community and how do we forge relationships with students? I think what we're bringing in will really help with that. So do you want to go on to the second slide?
Sure. Uh-oh. Oh, there.
There we go. So secondary, um, you know, secondary is a tough nut in a way, you know, because they are so academically focused, you know, and, and I, for good reason. The stakes are high in that area, but YTRY gets at what the staff are reporting that they need support with. Motivation of students, resilience. So can you take what you learned hypothetically as an elementary student and apply it as when the, when the going gets tougher? You know, when the academics get more rigorous, when interpersonal relationships with peers get a little more complicated, you know? So YTRY gets at that. Donna was able to sit in for a few minutes today. And we have a, a team from the junior high and a team from the high school starting this training today. And it'll go into tomorrow. And they plan on bringing this to the students. These are very experiential activities, things that you could start right away. And so unlike a whole different sort of mindset with the elementary, with emotional intelligence, these are things like, why would you make this choice as opposed to this choice? Who's your support system? You know, helping students identify those, you know, sort of older student skills. And so, yeah, the two teams, five people at each site, the high school will be utilizing their advisory period, I believe, to sort of get this out to all of the students. And the teams will be, you sort of train the trainers and be doing the scope and sequence for the additional teachers who will be implementing the curriculum. And at the junior high, I believe the PE teachers will be responsible. And YTRY actually recommended PE as a great place to bring this forward. So excited about that.
So Diane, when, when we ran into each other earlier today, we were talking about like, how does this compare with toolbox? Like, is this another thing we're asking teachers to do on top of toolbox, on top of other things we've tried? I was, I mean, there were three different things specifically mentioned in the elementary school handbook about the types of social emotional programs we do. And so like, does this complement, does this replace, is it sort of new generation, like what, how would you?
So in the, in the beginning, I would say at the elementary lever, level, Ruler will complement toolbox. It won't replace it. I will, I would like to say that Ruler ultimately will sort of replace it over time. Not to say you still can't use those tried and true breathing tools, but we have really migrated away from explicitly teaching toolbox anyhow. So, um, and I want to say, unfortunately, there's not a lot of evidence that supports the effectiveness of toolbox. So when we chose these two things, we looked at research. We looked at, you know, the post and pre-analysis of when they implemented these programs. And anything requires fidelity, so that will be an important factor in this. You know, it'll be an important factor in how we implement it. But to answer your question, in the beginning, yes, I would say that it's, while the staff is establishing themselves with Ruler, toolbox might be their go-to. We only use second step for very specific lessons. In second step, we don't own the whole suite. So, so that's just very specific, safe, safe body kinds of lessons, so.
I, I really like, well, and what I'm, what I'm always kind of concerned about is this, like, are we using the same vocabulary with our kid? Going through, at least through elementary, and then again through secondary, so that teachers are using the same vocabulary as students are. Their expectations are very clear and here's, you know, discipline, but then here's the support for social emotional health. So, I, I mean, I, I, I mean, we have one program for primary, a different program for secondary. So is, do they have a continuum, the two programs at all, or?
They're not connected in any way, but I get what, what you're saying, you know, do they have to learn something brand new? And, and it's neither one of these things are like that, you know, there's not, you know, like toolbox has all of those sort of buzzwords, you know, that come with it. While there are visuals and music and things like that established in YTRY, you wouldn't, you wouldn't hear a junior higher saying, well, I'm going to go on the reality ride today. You know, which is one of their visual metaphors. It's not, it's not the same. What I do think is they're very complimentary. And I think, um, what we heard from the students and actually what we heard from the junior high staff as they migrated away from even using toolbox at, at the secondary level, is toolbox is just too babyish, you know, for the secondary, just to, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the word that they use to describe it. And it doesn't go past sixth grade. I could have chosen Ruler all the way through eighth grade, but I wanted to be respectful of what the staff were saying that they specifically needed, which is engagement, relationships, motivation. And that is what YTRY is for. YTRY was initially brought to Sonoma County following the fires. You know, when we wanted to teach the skills of resilience, you know, how do we do that? So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm hoping that it's the right fit, you know, and trusting that it is. Anything with any effort and enthusiasm behind it can be the right fit, so. And I want to, Judy, I'm gonna, I wanted to, you guys set me up so well in the earlier conversation with what's going on in terms of, you know, our planning for distance learning versus how are we going to support the students? We knew we needed to hit the ground running. I mean, you know, we beefed up. We got the nurse on board for an additional day. We got an additional counselor, counseling intern. We're also thinking about bringing in an additional counseling intern if Alex is on here and, you know. I said, don't freak out. I texted him earlier. I'm, I'm thinking about this fourth person, if he can supervise them. And then we'd have a counseling intern at each site. I have never in the history of, of my experience in the school district ever seen that many resources. And we won't be perfect in the beginning. We won't know it all. But I also want to say that we have a lot of data. You know, we've got the data from the staff survey, we've got the data from the, from the student survey, we've got data from Youth Truth that we're. We've got data from Youth Truth that we're only just starting to analyze, but there are very specific COVID effect questions in there that we can use. And advisory is already looking at those questions now, wanting to plan for what the student experience might be and how they've been affected. So I, I am really excited about that. And I'm very proud to work in this district that really puts that kind of, those kinds of resources out there for kids and for staff. So I'm going to have my soapbox now, if you have any other questions.
No, I, I think that was ideal. And I, I do love that you feel like these, um, skills can help address specific needs at the high school we're seeing in their classrooms and with their students. That's critical, I think.
Yeah, I, I do. Motivation is hard. We will all, we're all in junior high, we're trying to find what, what's, what's relevant. That while my friends are more important to me, you know, and I'm, I'm hoping that this will help.
Um, and do these programs have an element of, or can you see them being used to, again, kind of be helping us address some of the issues around empathy building and associated racism?
Um, absolutely, yeah, 100%. So, uh, empathy is a big, well, building empathy, building that sort of social awareness. How, how your action might make another feel is a huge component of Ruler. And then in terms of Y Try, you know, how, being, what makes you a part of a group? And, you know, how your peers are interacting with each other and all of that is another big part of, of Y Try curriculum. So whether it gets at that sort of unconscious bias, you know, the things that we need to be very explicit about, not to the extent that they wouldn't need to be supplemented. It's not a one size fits all, but I think it's a good introduction. And then you can continue the conversation in a more explicit way around addressing, you know, that sort of unconscious bias piece of it.
Well, definitely, I mean, from my perspective, I always think of Toolbox and some of these social emotional things being much more, um, active in elementary and primary. And I definitely want to support anything and everything we can do to make this more active in secondary.
Thank you.
So, you know.
Unfortunately, the principals aren't on right now. I'll let them know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Donna. I appreciate the board's support on this, I really do.
Oh, yeah, it just echoes everything we're hearing about. People are fragile, people are emotional, people are really, I mean, I don't know how kids are dealing with this in their own unique way that kids deal with things. And, uh, having a lot of resources, having, um, you know, the bottom of that triangle be really strong around social emotional supports.
It's a great place to start. It's been a long time since the junior high and high school had, had a identified social emotional learning platform.
Sorry, I feel like I'm talking a lot. Other trustees, comments, questions?
Just a reminder, this is an action item, so we're looking for you to approve the contracts for both Y Try and Ruler.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments by fellow trustees?
Nope, it's exciting.
Take a vote.
Hospital ever has his hand up?
I, we do have a couple of comments. Um, I'm going to start with Mindy. Uh, Mindy Kiff, she's not able to actually make a comment, but she did have, she's curious and she can, she said, she'd emailed Diane. But she's, um, how do parents access the Y Try materials that are available to them right now? And then will, you know, the link be provided, take this, list it on the school website?
Yep, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, and then we can always put it on the website too, when you're ready for that, Diane.
Right.
Okay, okay. And then we have two other comments. Um, Ever Flores.
Uh, I just want to know if I heard this correctly. So the Y Try for the secondary, will that be in the, uh, PE department? Or I, I, i- is, is that what you said, Diane?
Um, PE at the junior high is the plan and advisory.
Okay, so regarding the advisory, you know, I just want to let the board know that, you know, that is a negotiable item on this, at this moment. Had I, doesn't that? I've heard, you know, some, some hesitation on part of our members because it's just, it's one more set of contact with students in terms of an advisory board. I personally, as a counselor, support that. Also, my job is to let you know, you know, the concerns of my fellow members. So I just want you to be aware of that, okay?
I hear you. That's the plan, but it certainly, um, can be adaptable. Um, English teachers teach it, history teachers, PE teachers, any, as long as there's a, a place for it and that place is identified and, you know, supported. So, thank you though.
And Diane, but would all teachers end up being trained on this through the Train the Trainer program, or how?
Yeah. Eventually, yeah.
Eventually, yeah.
No more public comments, Karen?
I'm sorry, uh, yes, we do, we have Corinne Meadows or Corinne Ephraim.
I go by both sometimes, anyway. Hi again, so I just wanted to, um, I'm not so much on the secondary level, but, um, just on the elementary level. Um, I think it's great that we, as a school district, are constantly reevaluating and examining some of the social emotional learning tools that we use. But I also sometimes feel like we have like really short memories and like a sort of a tale of caution. Um, I remember Second Step when it was here and it was great. And then there was lots of research that supported the date, you know, lots of data that supported how great it was. Um, and then I also recall when we had Toolbox, um, the same type of, um, conversation around, you know, the research showed and the data showed. And so, um, now we're moving to this next, next type of program with Ruler. And I, I just hope that, um, you know, it is a lot of money to put out, you know, for the school district, especially when we've just had to make some big cuts. And I just hope that, um, we're not in like two or three years from now, walking down the same path saying, oh, well, it's, it's not really as good as we thought it was. And, um, there was research at the time, but now research has changed or shows differently. So I just think it's important to note that when the other, um, curriculums were rolled out, we, there was, um, it was touted as having great research backed behind it again. So I just thought it was important to add that piece, thanks.
You're welcome. And I want to say, Corinne, there, Second Step does have a lot of research and it was definitely a contender. It really was. Um, I think we just liked this approach a little bit better.
Okay, that, we, oh, sorry. I was, after a public comment, discussion, I had one other comment. That was it, that was all the public comment, yeah.
Thank you, Karen.
Jamie?
Yeah, so we have a, a motion and a second, but when it comes to the discussion, my question actually was around Corinne's. Uh, can you explain where the funding comes from for these programs? Where do we, where do we pull that money from?
So we, um, we had already cut our budget around professional development, right? So this was already budgeted in, in the figure that we had talked about, I don't remember, two weeks ago, maybe at a board meeting. So, uh, we, we definitely set monies aside dedicated towards, uh, social emotional learning as part of the, I mean, it's less than half of what we had last year for professional development. So it's not new spending, it was something that we'd already forecasted, although it's a different program, so.
So it had been on, it was a priority, we already funded, had already had the money set aside for it. It's not, we're not adding on top of what we had set aside, this was
Correct.
Part of that number, okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that out loud. Thank you.
So we have a, a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? Are there any other comments or questions? Oh, okay, all in favor of adopting these two social emotional learning programs for this upcoming year? Please say aye.
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 Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, thank you everyone, thank you for all the comments too. Okay, we're going to move on to school business. Uh, I don't have a gavel. Okay. I use my tea, uh, my teacup. Uh, I'm calling to order a public hearing, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, for public comments on the collective bargaining tentative agreement with CSCA for 2021, as required by Assembly Bill I 202756. And Debbie, is there anything that you want to add or say as far as the opening the public hearing? No. So you just have to do this, okay. Um, so is there, are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, tend to be the tentative agreement between
You gotta close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get your tea out.
The public hearing, thank you very much, with no comments. Uh, tend to be agreement between CSCA, California School Employees Association, Charter Number 314, and the Healdsburg Unified School District.
Any questions on the TA from the board?
No, Debbie, thank you for sending the updated with the minor changes for the board meeting right now. Any questions, comments, fellow trustees? Okay. Uh, so do, uh, is this, uh, okay, gotta go to a, a, a public hearing? And this is a action discussion, not a resolution, correct?
Action.
Action, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, okay, the CSCA.
Oh my gosh, can you guys tell me who did the first and second? I'm sorry.
Judy did the first.
I think Mike did the second, or there were a couple of people.
No.
Okay, thank you, sorry, sorry.
No, it's fine. Okay. And unanimously approved. Uh, moving on to the public disclosure of collective bargaining tentative agreement, Assembly Bill 1200. To forward here. So this is the paperwork associated with this, um, bargaining, correct?
That just puts all the figures out for you that you're actually approving in the
All the numbers and if what that does to our budget, et cetera. Do I, questions or comments on that by the board? Any public comments? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the public disclosure?
So moved.
Dr. Sally?
Second, Judy got in first. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, so that passes unanimously. Moving on to the, the then classified salary schedule based on these increases for 2021. Um, any questions or concerns about the, um, the agreement? And I will say that's a 5.5% agreement for the classified staff, which is different but equitable for the, um, uh, as compared to the, um,
Same percentage, yeah.
Same percentage, exactly.
Also, this classified, um, schedule includes the new, um, job descriptions for the food service department? That you proved on tonight?
Exactly. Any questions or comments from fellow trustees? No? Uh, do I have a motion to pass the classified salary schedule?
I will move to approve.
Second.
Jamie moved, or Sally, uh, seconds. Uh, everyone in favor of the revised 2021 classified salary schedule? Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No, so that passes unanimously. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, I do have one public comment.
Oh, yes, please.
Is that, uh, okay, or should we wait till after Swim Center?
What's
Yeah, which item?
Actually, it's, it's regarding this item, it's regarding the CSCA schedule, so.
Okay, then I say let's do it now, is that okay?
Yes, that's right, that's correct. Um, it's from Ever Flores.
So, um, I was looking at the schedule and it looks like we still have a, a couple of, um, CSCA members who are earning below $15 an hour as an entry level position here in Healdsburg Unified School District. I just, uh, want you guys to be aware that, you know, uh, the minimum wage is going to go up in a couple of years. And I hope that you, you guys will consider, you know, our CSCA, you know, uh, entry level salaries to be at least at the minimum wage. I, I had a time, I, I had of the minimum wage that the state is pushing. Um, I know other cities like the city of San Rosas pushing for that and, and so I just want you to be cognizant of that because, you know, $15 an hour in Healdsburg, does absolutely nothing for a family of two, okay, or four, I gotta say, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Ever.
Thank you, Ever.
Well, but point of clarification, Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah.
Do we have any employees that are at those lower levels?
We do not have any employees at range A or B. Those are antiquated pieces of our salary schedule. The one, um, or, or C for that matter, just D, yard duty, would be the only one that's at 1450 right now. So the, the yard duty hour is the only one that's below. Um, well, no, then E is barely below. But yeah, so there's two that are less than 50 cents, 50 cents or less below. Yeah. And actually, there's nobody in E either, so it's just yard duty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, any comments, public comments? No. Okay, so moving on to E, uh, Swim Center salary schedule. Uh, it's the same, again, equitable increase. Um, any comments or questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Oh, Mike first, how about Jamie?
I'll go ahead and second.
Second, thank you. It's, some of it's timing on Zoom too, because there's little delays that are different for everybody, so it's what I, which may look different than what the rest of the world sees, I'm not favoring anybody.
No worries.
The Mike, uh, did, uh, confirm the motion, Jamie seconded. All in favor of the Swim Center salary schedule for 2021?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Okay, I just am having so much fun with my water bottle. Going to call to order a public hearing on the, um, collective bargaining tentative agreement with HADA for 2021, as required by Assembly Bill I 202756. Any public comments on the HADA agreement, tentative agreement?
Ever Flores, Ever, did you, are you, you making your comment now or at the salary schedule?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Right.
Well, I just want to make the, um, board know, uh, there, there is, I think, a, a, a legal term called regressive bargaining. That once, uh, a, uh, decision has been made by a, a party, uh, even if, uh, even if a party says no to that, uh, the opposing party may not go below what they had originally offered. So, and that, and I'm fairly well practiced. Uh, the union chose not to pursue that route because of litigation and the time that it would take to litigate that. But I just want you to be aware that that is an illegal way of doing bargaining. And I wish that, you know, um, and I, and I just want you guys to be cognizant and aware of that, that regardless of what happens at the negotiation table, um, a party may not negate a previously, um, proposed, term, okay, so, uh, and, uh, you can, you can look it up, the term is regressive bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you, Ever. Any other public comments on the, is, as far as the public hearing for the HADA agreement?
No.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and the, uh, the public hearing. And we will move on to 102G, the tentative agreement between HADA and HUSD.
Yeah, this is the, I'm sorry, this is the agreement that we came to with HADA. It involves the same 6.5%, although it's distributed a little differently than the classified. And so they wanted to do some work on equalizing the salary schedule because there's some spots that were not as well compensated as we would like. And so we are putting $1,000 into every cell and then giving 4% raise on top of that in the salary schedule, and then, of course, the benefits increase. So it comes out to be an increase of 6.5%.
And Chris, to be clear, that 6.5% is really an equivalent raise across all of the bargaining units.
Correct.
And management, they look a little different how we get to the 6.5%, but it's 6.5.
Yeah, yeah.
On average.
On average, yeah.
Any other comments or questions about the agreement?
No comments.
Do I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement between HADA and HUSD?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Ariceli and Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. All right, public disclosure of collective bargaining tentative agreement. So this is, again, all the paperwork and the numbers clearly outlining the impact on budget over the years, et cetera, et cetera. Any questions or concerns about the public disclosure? None. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second.
Thank you, Ericelli and Jamie. All, any final comments? All in favor of approving the public disclosure?
Aye.
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 Okay, that was everybody. Moving on to the certificated salary schedules for 2021 for, yeah, for certificated staff. Any questions or comments?
Aye. So this is the, this is the certificated salary schedule for different number of days.
Right, different number of days for different staff.
For the nurses.
Ages and steps.
Any questions around those?
No, I have no questions.
No questions or comments, okay? Um. And then in, to comment made earlier, regressive bargaining, I believe was the term.
I don't want to get into a dispute over what regressive bargaining is, but I do not believe that we engage in regressive bargaining. And it is my understanding that when one side does turn down an offer from another side, it can change. And not to mention, we entered COVID in an economic downfall that creates a material loss and that allows in the law for bargaining to go in a different direction. So nonetheless, I appreciate the, the, the union's willingness to work with us, and I'm really pleased that we can bring these raises at a time when most people are worried about their jobs and we're instead giving a raise to, a well-deserved raise to our employees. And I look forward to the time when we can give more because we do realize we have a lot of work to do for better compensating our people, so.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. On the, I noticed I made an error on the cover sheet for the salary schedules. The salary schedules reflect 1,000 per cell plus 4%. On the cover sheet, I have 4.5. That's an error. It's 4%.
But the net, net is still 6.5.
Correct.
Correct. And each salary schedule reflects the 4% on the bottom. But I had a typo on the cover sheet.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Well, I make a comment on the certificated salary schedule.
I think we're unclassified right now.
Oh, unclassified, okay.
No, we're on.
We're on teachers.
Counselors and speech therapists. So it's part of HADA, part of the teachers' union.
Right, okay.
They have a longer, longer calendar, so they get paid a few days more.
Certified. Thank you, thank you, Mike, sorry.
I missed my, but that's fine. I just hope we can, I hope the money comes in so we can give the teachers and all the certificated and classified salary, classified people the money that we're hopefully able to give them when the numbers come in, is all I have to say.
It's definitely looking good on that first trigger, for sure.
All right, that's good.
Excellent. Okay, are we ready? Do we already do a motion? I'm sorry.
No, not yet.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the certificated management salary schedule for 2021?
It's not management salary schedule.
You're on I. You need to go to I, Donna.
Yeah, so I move to approve the certificated salary schedule.
I saw certificated lower on my board. I'm sorry. Salary schedule for 2021. Do I have a motion?
Ariceli, are you doing it?
I moved, yes.
Yeah.
Second.
Seconded by Judy. Everybody, who?
Aye.
Aye. Getting rummy?
It was approved unanimously. Sorry, I'm having a hard time with my words now. Okay, and moving on to J, extra duty salary schedule for 2021.
This is the coaching and the extra duties, club advisors, various things that staff engage in that are part of the HADA bargaining agreement, so.
I'm of approval.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mike and Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, back to my water mug. I'm gonna call to order the public hearing for the proposed management unrepresented salary schedules for 2021 as required by Assembly Bill I 202756. Public comments on this topic about proposed management salary?
I do not have any comments in the chat.
Okay. Um. I am going to, I'm taking my time just to make sure someone's not typing slowly. I'm gonna close the public hearing and move on to L, public disclosure of proposed management salary schedules. Any comments or concerns? I will point out that, again, it is the same increase. And I really, I will say, I really like that everybody gets the same increase in our district. I think that's an equitable way to do this. So any comments or concerns, questions? Do I have a motion to improve the salary schedule for management?
This is public, well, yeah, AB 1200.
So moved.
Go ahead. Judy moves to approve. I'll second.
This is the public disclosure, yes. Do I have a motion to approve the public disclosure?
I moved it. Jamie seconded it.
Got it.
Thank you, Judy and Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? M, classified confidential salary schedule for 2021? Any comments or questions? It is really hard to keep track of all this. I'm scrolling through my iPad and reading off paper. No comments or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the classified confidential salary schedule?
I'll move.
Oh, I'm sorry, then who, who approved? Ariceli and Mike, thank you.
Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Moving on to N, classified management salary schedule for 2021? Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Judy and Mike, excellent, thank you. Thank you for seconding, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Certificated management salary schedule for 2021. That was the one I wanted to do earlier so badly. Any comments or concerns? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The delay is hysterical. Ariceli, we'll get to Judy this time. Judy seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Could we do board salary now?
I'll give you whatever raise, you can get whatever increase you want because it's multiple.
Yes, it's multiplied by zero, yes.
I was a little surprised at the mayor's salary, I must say, but that's another discussion. Okay. Calling a public hearing for the 2021 initial budget. This is time to hear public comments on the 2021 initial budget. Any public comments?
No comments in the chat.
I'm just gonna pause. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on the 2021 initial budget. And we will move to the 2021 adopted budget, 2021 balances in excess of minimum reserves and multi-year projection. Debbie?
Thank you.
I gotta find where we are on this. Holy cow.
215.
Thank you. So close.
Okay, so you have in front of you the initial budget, which is a moment in time, a couple of days ago, and it's probably already not accurate. But we're in right now. We don't have a state budget. Nothing's been finalized. But this is the best we have right now at this moment in time. So it's based off what we know now. And it's going to be inaccurate, and it's, it's not a secret that it's going to be inaccurate. But it's important that we adopt a budget because we have to to continue to pay bills and for employees to get paid. So it's, it's something we have to do. So with that said, I'd like to move on with the assumptions. Karen?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah. First of all, I'll go over some of the challenges we have. Cash is a big challenge. Staying positive cash is going to be very hard in the year going forward. We are going to have a lot of deferrals. We won't be getting our fourth apportionment until sometime in 2021. Keeping the reserves to the board mandated percentage is going to be difficult. And this year we'll be fine in property taxes, but moving forward, we may not receive the tax receipts in a timely manner like we have in the past, depending on when they're paid. We don't know about cost. We don't know exactly what the learning model is going to look like. We don't know about staffing. We anticipate we will need more. Cleaning supplies, our insurance rates have increased by 30% since COVID.
Wow.
Challenges we'll be dealing with.
Shoot.
Turning to school. Educate the children, implement schedules. All of these different things that we're working on now are part of the unknowns. And so are the costs that will go along with it.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna just add, I'm on the resin board, and the base rates for, for any kind of corporation and nonprofit when it comes to liability because of this environment that we're all living in have skyrocketed. And so it's a, it's a real issue that's going to be taxing every agency.
So Chris, what does the P and L stand for? Remind me? Property and liability.
Property and liability, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Karen? So some of the assumptions are, expect the same, the same property taxes as we have predicted. We are still budgeting our RDA at 85% of the 1819 levels, which is well over what SCO advises us to do, but we feel confident right now with that. We've budgeted all of state and federal revenues 20% less than we received in 1920 because we have no idea what they're going to come in at. We haven't been given any estimates. We do know we have a loss in revenue due to the closure of Healdsburg Charter School. Oops, sorry, my computer's hiding my screen. And we, we're gonna have a loss in local revenues. I haven't budgeted the half initiatives because I'm moving forward, I won't, I won't be budgeting them until we receive the donations. So we're gonna start moving. We'll budget them next year for when we get them the year after. If that makes sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Moving forward.
In property taxes, we're starting to see that the tax money come in. It won't be certified till end of August, September, so nothing, that's why it's not, no new money is reflected yet. But we're confident that we'll exceed the tax projections that we have in the budget, so.
I was gonna get there. So for some of the expenses, tech needs, we did have money put aside for the Chromebooks because we were still staying on the path for two to one, but now we need additional Chromebooks. And we don't know what additional needs we will, will have. So I'm expecting the tech cost to go way up. Contribution to special ed right now is at 2.74 million from the general fund. And that's based on students that we believe we will have and the increased rates from SCO. Debbie, what, excuse me, what, what was it a year or two ago? I mean, is this increasing every year?
Yes.
Yes. Dramatically? Well, I've only been looking at this for about six months, but from what I could tell, yes. And we have fewer students in the district. That's amazing.
Yeah, part of it is, it's just, it's the students that go to non-public schools and how expensive it is to run a non-public school and the rates that they charge. So those rates continue to go up. And by IEP, we, we have to send our students there, and it's really what they need.
Right.
Yep.
What category is out when they go out?
Other school students do come out of the 5,000s in, in the budget, so it does inflate numbers that look like consultants.
All right, okay.
Right now, we're, I have a contribution to the cafeteria of 200,000. We are going to need to purchase a lot more supplies, paper products. We're gonna have to package all the food. Serving carts, depending on how we're serving. Right now, it looks like most of the admin want their students to be served in the classroom. We'll need more staff. And we're looking at loss in revenues with transportation. How often the children will be riding the bus? How many students we get on the bus? And then we're adding counseling interns to the elementary sites. I think Diane mentioned that earlier. So those are the, some of the changes that are in the budget assumptions. Enrollment and staffing. Enrollment's still declining. We're expecting 1362, and that's before COVID. So I don't know what that'll look like when the fall comes. We've reduced certificated staff by 4.6 FTE. Nobody lost a position. It was all vacant positions we didn't fill, including the dean at the junior high school. Classified staff was reduced at 1.2. Instructional days are staying the same at 181. And this budget does include the 6.5 salary increase.
Worth, worth noting, it doesn't include additional teachers at elementary yet.
Right.
Wait for that information, yeah.
So this is a little bit of a snapshot of the main category budget, showing you the revenues that we're projecting to come in at 25 million and the expenses at 26 million. It shows this deficit spending, 1.2 million. We were expecting that with the raises at 6.5%. It brings us below our reserve level of 13.3, but we did have the reserves to cover it. And then this does not include the revenues that we haven't received to finish 1920. So it's possible that the reserves will be higher at the end of the year after unaudited actuals. This is a snapshot of what the salaries are costing the district, broken out by certificated and classified. And the total increase is 1.1 million. And this is just a visual on where our dollars are spent, showing you that most of the money, 80% is to salary and benefits. And the rest is, is showing you there, but most of it's salary and benefits. So here's our multi-year projection for this year we're in now and the next three years. It shows you that our reserves will drop down to 3.29 the third year out. That's kind of, that's a guess at this point in time. I don't expect it to get that low. We should finish 2021 at 12%, which is still pretty good, and I think it'll be higher once we get our RDA final numbers at the end of 1920. But it does show us deficits then. So this is just a few things I had to say in closing. I believe we'll finish with higher reserves. We will, we will be receiving dollars, COVID dollars for relief. We expect them to be pretty substantial, but I haven't budgeted any of them at this time because I'm not gonna budget them until we receive them. But if we do receive them, it should take care of a lot of the expenses we've incurred so far. And this budget is just, you know, it's the initial. I'll be revising it in 45 days. And most likely, probably 45 days after that, and it'll probably continue for a few months until things start to stabilize.
Yeah.
They start to stabilize.
Yeah.
So I think it's gonna continue to be a moving target.
Yeah. Well, thank you for doing all this work with so many unknowns.
Yes.
And it's really hard to make a budget with so many unknowns.
Yeah.
Debbie. I want to compliment you on the narrative that you've, in this presentation that you, I mentioned it to you this afternoon when I saw you. I really appreciated the narrative and the explanation and the snapshots that you put into, into this. It was a great clarifier.
Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Debbie.
Yeah, I did too. You know, I have to add this is that in listening, it's not, it's kind of like scary, but it's conservatively scary and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Because we don't know. I mean, it's where everybody is, we don't know, but, but your honesty about it is just, it's great. It's, it's, I appreciate the openness, saying, we don't know, and this is what we're doing. So I'm sure we'll come out okay with your, with your help.
It's really not a comfortable feeling.
No, I'm sure it's not for you.
It does allow us to prioritize and make decisions moving forward that would be impossible to make otherwise. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Debbie too. She chose probably the absolute worst time in to become a
In all history.
Yeah. With, you know, the, the uncertainty around COVID that just, it had, nothing has gotten more certain, right? It's, it's gotten increasingly uncertain, you know, and we obviously had the negotiations that we were engaged in that thankfully closed and, but closed like at the last minute. And so all of this came down really hard and with a huge amount of workload and some personnel issues in the business office. And Debbie needs a break.
Yes.
But she's handled it extremely well. And I told her last week, she could probably teach a class after all of this on how to do this. But, so thank you, Debbie, for everything that you've done.
Absolutely.
Love it, Debbie.
She's amazing. Any other questions or comments? I feel like in some ways we're kind of, I mean, it's changed, but in looking at budgets related to salary increases and stuff, where I feel very intimately, you know, already familiar with the budget. And so that is another kudo to you, Debbie, for really doing such a good job, giving us the information we need. But are there any other questions or comments on the budget? It's not like it's just a few pages in our packet.
It was huge.
All the rest of you watching don't get to see that.
Once again.
Right now, yeah.
Just want to publicly acknowledge again and make sure everyone hears this, that this is a conservative budget. It has assumptions in there that we know are outdated. In two days, it's gonna be way outdated once the state passes its budget. We know property taxes will come in at a higher rate than we have reflected here, but we don't know what rate. And so we have to conservatively project it. But like Debbie said, in 45 days, we'll be, we'll be adjusting as things change. So I mean, on audit actuals, we will have a better, a better beginning point on next year's budget in terms of revenue.
Debbie, I, I'm sorry, I have an obscure, a question about some obscure data in here, and you may not be able to answer this totally off the top of your head, but in, under food service, it shows a decline in revenue in the 2021 budget in sales, like by half-ish. Is that related to the COVID? Is that?
A lot of that is related to COVID and we can't enforce payment.
Oh, so right, we stopped school and
Right.
We also don't anticipate doing the robust à la carte items that we have at the high school when you can't have kids come into the cafeteria to choose things and have the money changing. Be a fixed menu, you know, kind of French laundry-ish for a while.
Oh, yeah, big fee pre.
Great comparison.
Big French laundry.
I'm sorry, she just said single thread. We're in Hillsburg, so.
Yes, that's right. Thank you. Well, but maybe that's an opportunity to do the last whole discussion, something creepy. I'm sure something else, money movement with our thing, and then self-insurance. Give me a 30 second or 15 second self-insurance. Is that rebit? There's a whole thing about self-insurance fund?
No, that's most likely our, our OPEC.
Yeah, it's our OPEC insurance.
Should be 600 some thousand in there, I think, yeah.
Fund 67?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. It was like either with rebit or retirement, I ran on there and then
We're not putting into it again this year, correct, Debbie?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Those were
There are a couple, there's a public comment and then I'm gonna just read a question from someone. I don't know if we want to have trustees talk first, or do you want me to do that?
Can you put the screen back up with the people?
Yeah.
Let's do the people. And then are we ready? I think, I think it would be good to have some public comment now.
I think it's fine, but as a matter of order, typically in a budget discussion, that's why we have a public hearing. It's for the public comments. And so we do it now, but it's totally fine. We can.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we had, one, one question from Robin Doherty. She's just wondering, what is the recommended percentage for reserves as set by SCO?
SCO does not, SCO honors school board policy. So there's the state minimum by law, which is 3%. We have a school board policy because we're community funded, and so we, we don't have kind of the same safety net that state districts might have. And so we have a 3.33% reserve that we are supposed to keep by our own board policy and SCO enforces that. And so when they, I will get a letter scolding me for allowing us to project being below 13.33. It's fairly typical, honestly, at this juncture in time because we don't know our property taxes. And what they're gonna come in at for the, this past year, or the, the model we budget with is insanely weird in terms of we get funded way after we've spent the money.
So Chris, can you clarify? Because I think you said three point that our board
You did. You said 3.33.
13.
13.3.
It's 13.33.
13.3.
Thank you.
3.33.
That's why we're all looking puzzled.
Oh, well, make sure we notice that we're gonna dip below, we're gonna go below that in our projections, and that's what they do recommend and enforce, so.
Thank you. And we have a public comment from Ever Flores.
Um, one is a question that's for Debbie, and she can answer the question afterwards. In terms of RDA funding, if I'm reading this correctly, are you budgeting the same sort of funding for the 2021, 22 and 23 school year? Just, it's kind of hard to see that.
I didn't understand. What was the question?
RDA funding, are you budgeting the same sort of funding for our redevelopment funds?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all, it's all based on 85% of the 1819.
Okay, so that's, that's, okay, got it. Alright, that's one.
So it's bud, it's budgeted flat.
Right, right. No, I saw that.
And then we are pushing back on SCO, who wants us to budget at 50%?
Right, no, I mean, Debbie mentioned that before. So, and then, you know, I've been getting a lot of texts and some emails, and I'm trying to keep up with that. And, and yes, you know, this is very dense material, but this is what the union's hearing and but you know, now that we closed negotiations, you know, the budget seems to be, once again, okay. And in a better sort of place. And I know this is a budget, right? And you have to budget, you know, three years ahead and budgets change. We usually, you know, focus on the unaudited actuals as, you know, for negotiations purposes. But, you know, the narrative keeps going that, you know, now that negotiations have ended, you know, things seem to be a little bit better. And then the years that we expect to negotiate things are not looking as rosy. So this is what teachers are here and are on our end. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was, I didn't write it down, so I'll forget. Okay, I mean, that, that is the only comments that I have for, for the budget at this moment.
Karen, could you put the slides back up, please, and go to the slide that has the multi-year?
Oops. Yes. Set this one, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So this, I'd like to reflect for the trustees and for the public that we are by law mandated to have a 3% reserve at the end of our three-year budget. We can't dip below. And based on our budget assumptions, we're sitting at 3.29. This is actually significantly lower than what we had brought to the board when we were talking about negotiations. And it's actually, we believe we're gonna end up better as, as was alluded to. And when it comes to unaudited actuals with property tax revenues coming in. But at this point, this is actually lower than we thought it was gonna be. And we're right at the legal limit of what's permissible and 13, about 10% under what our board policy says we're supposed to be at. So I just wanted to clarify that point because the budget, in a three-year budget, has been stretched based on the assumptions we have. There was discussion around implementing a formula which would come after unaudited actuals in the future at some point. And this is the reasoning for it because we know what our revenues are in, in August or September. And it's incredibly hard to go ahead of time, especially in a COVID pandemic where you don't know what's gonna happen with property tax revenues, so. Anyway.
Yeah, I want to reinforce that, that even in a regular year, timing now is impossible. It's impossible to predict. And we're given constraints about how to predict. So, yeah.
Right. So, and then, and then the other thing that I remember to, that someone texted me about was the COVID, COVID funds that are coming in. So I wasn't too sure. I don't think Debbie talked about where is that going to go into? Is that restricted, unrestricted? I'm not sure what
We don't, we don't even know.
It's restricted.
And we don't know if it's coming yet. It has to be signed.
But if, if, but if it is, it will be restricted. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
And frankly, I mean, being totally transparent, some of those monies will go towards hiring those elementary teachers so we can get kids in school five days a week. So, yeah.
Lots going on with this budget. Any other, any board comment, fellow trustees, questions, comments? Are we ready to vote? Am I out here? Seriously, okay, do, and this is, oh, I'm completely, oh.
So we're on Q 2020, 21 adopted budget for balances in excess and minimum reserves and multi-year.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if this is not a resolution, this is a resolution.
Right, and I'm gonna move to accept.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Okay. So is a resolution, is not a resolution?
No, it's not.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Reports. Hough's report. Do we have anyone on from Hough?
No.
No. Yeah, alright. Hada, Hada first ever had a report.
He's blocked. He's muted.
Okay, yeah, I, I think I did bring up a lot of the issues throughout the meeting, so I only have one to bring up to you guys. It, it seems like there is a discussion between the district and Hada about a minimum amount of how many students are allowed in the classroom. And it seems like it's 15 according to the district. I, I know that the district has the best interest at heart in terms of the safety of students and children. And I just want to make sure that, you know, that number 15 is backed up by science, you know? Just because our numbers show differently. And that is the only thing that is pending at this moment. I don't have anything else on my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Ever.
Thank you. Any report from CSEA tonight, today, this afternoon, whatever time it is?
I don't believe so. Nope.
Okay, no student trustee. I hope he's enjoying his summer. And board of trustees, any wants to report? No? Okay. Shall we take a short break? I think we need it.
Yeah, five minutes.
Yes.
Yeah, we're 6:11. We'll come back at 6:16, quick five-minute break, and then we will reconvene.
Thank you.
Karen, I'm gonna mute myself. When I come back, would you double check and unmute me, please?
Yeah, I'm gonna stop my video and mute.
Yes, that's perfect. I hate that.
Print materials that were available, but also leaned on our instructional materials that are available online. And that third paragraph, I think, is really important and that we all take a minute to look at that third paragraph in this section here. And that we understand as educators, as community members, that we have tremendous inequities. And this emergency, I think, has pointed them out. And, you know, we all are hearing in the, in the public discourse out there about really shining the light on the tremendous inequities that are out there and that, you know, education attempts to be the great equalizer. And we wanted to make sure that we didn't unfairly punish those students who could not be a part of distance learning as they could as if they were inside of our classrooms. And so part of that was a whole harmless grading approach and that all grades as of March 13th were a minimum grade. I think we made some good decisions and again, thank Hatta and the teachers for being, you know, understanding, empathetic, but also trying to help students do the best that they could and the most learning that they could. And then lastly, that last paragraph, you know, the major impact. The major impact obviously is lack of socialization and last, lack of support that we can provide for kids when they're with us every day in the classrooms. We had to rely on parents and as we know, some parents were more well positioned because of their own educational background, their work situation, their home situation. I can't thank our bilingual parent outreach and education coordinators or coordinators enough, Alma and Espy. I don't know what it would have been like without them. Not having bilingual parent outreach and education coordinators, in my opinion, would have been a disaster. And we also have two school psychologists, we have three school counselors, we have Diane and her team. The special educators and, you know, I think Diane can speak to this, functioned as highly as ever to continue to support our students. We have Alex as our full-time behavior specialist and other community partners that I'm, that will be spoken to later in this report. And then it really was a community effort and that focusing on the social emotional aspect of this crisis had to take first and foremost of, of what we did. So that's section one. Section two, we're asked to speak how we met the needs of our unduplicated students, so English learners, foster youth and low-income students. We know that about 60% of our kids enter kindergarten as English language learners. So many, many of our students across the district are bilingual. And low income, we sit around 60 to 70% of our students. So this is the majority of our kids in HUSD. We also know that access to technology and distance learning was one of the biggest issues that we had with our unduplicated students. And so thankfully, again, we had Chromebooks, grade six through 12. We had some hotspots, we had about 40 hotspots already in the district. We needed about 100. So we worked as quickly as possible to make sure that every student who needed a district-issued Chromebook and hotspot could get one. I think we did pretty good with the technology in terms of Chromebooks. But the hotspots became a barrier. And so, again, speaking to the work of the parent outreach and education coordinators, helping our families sign up for low-cost internet that were, was available in their home. And many of these families didn't know that that was an option. And so we got them signed up so they'll have low-cost internet for after all of this blows over. Also to get the free extended data plans to their phones, so their phones could work as hotspots was an effort that we made. And, and, and we have families that were rural or are rural that we, hotspots aren't an option. So providing print materials for those handful of families where internet just really isn't going to happen for them. So the, the, making sure that low-income students, foster youth and English learners had adequate technology, that's the first paragraph. The second paragraph is really focused on English language learning. And in grade six through 12, all of our students have a designated ELD class. So those kids in six through 12 continue to get support through their designated ELD course and their teachers. Elementary teachers shifted to hosting small group ELD instruction at least once a week, online or over the phone in some cases, where technology or internet was a problem. So the teachers were, I have to say, very creative in this and figured it out, whether it was small group or over the phone using, thankfully, as Maria mentioned, we have a host of bilingual teachers, many in the, in the elementary. So they did extra work, as did our bilingual paraprofessionals to assist parents and students. So we were able to lean on our bilingual paraprofessionals to provide one-on-one support, not only to, to the kids, but to the student, to the parents as well, because we know parents became teachers. We have some good curriculum, adopted curriculum, so we tried to stick to that and not go off and searching a million different things, but focused on the instructional resources that we have on hand. Worth mentioning that we've had Rosetta Stone in the district for many years for our upper grade students, so they can practice their listening and speaking. And so the Rosetta Stone software suite that is for educational use, which continued to be made available to the sixth through 12th grade newcomers in particular, so they could practice their listening and speaking skills. And trying as much as we could to continue to video conference with ELAC and DLEC to keep parents informed and get their feedback. I'll say that Diane and her team, that last paragraph now I'm moving to, in terms of foster youth, reached out to every single one of our foster and homeless families. Thankfully, we don't have a lot, you know, we're a small district, but we do have foster families, we do have homeless family, or family, students. Every single one of those students was contacted by one of our student support services personnel to check in and make sure they had what they needed, not only to learn, but to make sure that they were safe and cared for in terms of housing, food and, and other, you know, material goods. Counseling was also, you know, making sure that not just district counseling, but referrals for outside services were made. So that's section two. Moving on to section three, this is the focus then on learning, that how did we do distance learning, what did we do? Again, the, the work that we've done over the last five or six years to infuse technology across the district paid off. That our teachers and our kids, this was not new. They knew how to use Google Classroom, they knew how to use Power School Learning, some more than others, right? Some had a steeper learning curve, but it wasn't something that we had never touched before. There were a few things like Screencastify, where teachers could tape a video lesson. That was new and I'm impressed by the number of teachers that hopped into that and will be probably getting better at things like that in the, in the next year. We also were mindful though about screen time, particularly for our youngest students. And we had many, many discussions as educators and with families about trying not to rely too heavily on screen time and we know that we need to continue to get better at that and are continuing to look at that as we head into, you know, round two, 2.0 of distance learning for next year, particularly for our youngest students. So moving on to the last part there of section three. Diane continually reminded us as a district leadership team, and I know our special educators were working hard to partner with all of the teachers across the school district to make sure that the needs of our students with IEPs, 504 plans, and, you know, I mentioned earlier, English learners, that we didn't forget that, that kids are different and they have different needs. And so while I've said the focus on distance learning was to support the social emotional wellness, that we needed to make sure that the whole child was a part of that. And the special ed team was amazing, the heart and soul and, you know, support that they provided for parents and our kids. You know, I got little tastes of it here and there. And I'm sure, you know, Diane and others could speak to it better than I can. I mentioned previously in the first section about moving to more of a formative-based assessment and providing students every opportunity to turn and work. We had spreadsheets for each student, so we were tracking when and how we were making contact with them. And that every single student was contacted, you know, we had no families go completely off the wire. When, you know, we, we couldn't make contact, we, we did a couple of home visits, but we made sure that every family, every student was contacted. And then lastly, we put a lot of materials and resources that were specifically curated for HUSD families up on our website. So moving into the last section there. Our IT department was on call for teachers and students, our librarians were on call. I didn't hear too much and I'm hoping, you know, as we're looking through the surveys that we put out there, that we didn't have families that just couldn't get their Chromebook to work or just couldn't get their hotspot to work and that our librarians and IT department were there to assist at any time. The fun bilingual videos, right, we tried to have fun with this and Greta, I know you were spoken about before, but Greta and her read alouds, making sure that the CDC information about wearing a mask and hand washing, especially for our youngest students and helping them understand why they needed to wear a mask and getting our teachers to speak to that in their instruction. The fun videos that were made by Chef Casino and our Spanish department. And just trying to not only learn, but to have fun together as we would if we could be together. So I'm going to move on to section four. Section four asks us to speak about school meals and that, again, we know in a district where 60 to 70% of our students are eligible for a free or reduced price lunch, that that was an important piece. Debbie and her team did a phenomenal job, again, not, not a day went by where our kids and their families couldn't come by and get breakfast and lunch in multiple locations. So we had the high school open, Hillsburg Elementary School open for the grab and go, go, grab and go format. And then after one week, we realized we needed to up it and we started delivering food for distribution at two different apartment complexes in our community. In addition to making sure that our continuing food service through, that we provide through Geyserville School, West Side and Alexander Valley. So Debbie and her team and the food service and, you know, maintenance was in on this, it was all hands on deck to make sure that our families and our kids had the food that they needed. That next paragraph, talking about groceries to go, I hope all of you stop by at some point to see this happening. A beautiful thing to see healthy potatoes and celery and watermelons and milk and yogurt, delicious yummy yogurt that's not full of sugar be distributed. So not only daily food, but groceries so families could cook in their homes were distributed and are continuing through a partnership with the Redwire, Redwood Empire Food Bank. That really was, I think, a passion project for Alma Diaz, our parent outreach coordinator at the elementary, and then many of our staff members, paraprofessionals and others volunteering their own time, not only leading small groups with students and asking, answering parent questions and being instructional staff, but also volunteering their time to get healthy food out to our family. And then lastly, making sure that families understood that their EBT benefits and that pandemic EBT was available to them to buy food when schools were closed as well at the grocery store. So making sure that families that are eligible for that EBT were signed up. Okay, last section five, trying to move quickly here. The last question's about supervision and I'll say when this template first came out, there were kind of shockwaves through the system about, you know, what were we, what are we required? What are we supposed to be doing around supervision? And while there was no requirement for the school district to provide supervision, because we were in a shelter-in-place situation, it does behoove us to work with our community partners, again, that we already had in place prior to this emergency. So I, I want to be thankful of the city of Hillsburg and their community services team that we have partnered with for many, many, many years, well over a decade and as long as I've been in the district and longer than that. The after-school program that they, they jumped in and were ready and willing to provide families who were essential workers, childcare, but they did not get much, they didn't really get any kids showing up, so they closed after a short time, after about a week, week and a half. The, the essential childcare program through the city closed and they kind of shifted gears and, and really focused on our families that had been previously attending our after-school program and do even more to make sure that they had school supplies and, you know, fun things like balls and chalk and any additional tutoring they could provide and now have implemented a summer childcare program as well. North Bay Children's Center that we've partnered with for a couple of years now and was part of your board packet to continue that important partnership for our preschool-age students. They did a couple pop-ups for essential workers in, in our community to make sure that the youngest children had a place to go. And they actually have had kids attending on our campus at Fitch Mountain since middle of May. So they've been operating with our children in our community. Again, I encourage you, they are open for any questions or, you know, socially-distanced visit to see these little guys working six feet apart with their masks on inside the classroom. And so lastly, we, we must make sure that families know that there is a hotline, there's a number and a website that if they are struggling to find childcare, this must be in the report that they, that there is a 1-800 number there, 1-800-KIDS-793. And there's also a website there that they can log on to to find childcare. And this is a statewide effort, not just Hillsburg, but this is a statewide effort. I will say childcare, as we move into distance learning 2.0, is something that I've been spending a lot of time fretting about, not only as a parent, but as an educator. And that we're working very hard and hopeful that we can provide service in a partnership with the city of Hillsburg at the Foss Community Center and I think we're real close. In fact, the next thing on your agenda item is going to help with that in terms of funding. We are hopeful that we can provide robust childcare services for families that need support during those distance learning days for K5. And that the Boys and Girls Club would run a teen club at their facility here in Hillsburg for our grade six, seven and eight students on their distance learning days. So they would have a safe place and a supportive place to distance learn if home is not an option. So I, I am very hopeful and I am very optimistic that we're going to be able to provide support for supervision and additional support for distance learning for families that are going to need it come, come fall. So that's the operations report. Happy to answer any questions or take any suggestions.
Thank you, Erin.
Go ahead, Iris.
So, thank you, Erin. I, I just had a couple of questions because I know, you know, we need a plan for distance learning 2.0, just in case that does happen, it's very possible. Are we as a district going to be coming up with expectations, like minimum expectations of teacher-to-student time? I ask this because with my own son, I mean, he had some teachers that checked in with him regularly on a weekly basis, there were assignments. Some teachers were just doing SCL check-ins, which were wonderful, it was really thoughtful. And then we had teachers that didn't even come to the Zoom sessions that they set up. So there were like weeks at a time with no adult interaction with that teacher or those teachers. So I, I worry that if we don't have some common expectations for a minimum amount of instructional time and even maximum amount of instructional time, so that there's some equity there, so all students can get the required curriculum. I worry because this report is what the intent was, I think that this is what we wanted to see. I don't know, and I'm wondering if we could survey parents to see if this is actually what happened for their child. Because I know that from speaking to other families, there wasn't a lot of teacher instruction. And I know that there wasn't supposed to be new content, it was supposed to be mostly review, was the recommendation and the whole harmless. But in terms of teacher-to-student contact time, some students didn't get any. And I know that in my own son's case, with some teachers, he didn't get, he got very minimal time in those three months. And so that's concerning to me, I want to make sure, one of the teachers, Becky hadn't mentioned earlier today in a public comment about irreversible academic harm that we could be, you know, that students could be enduring as a result of this. And I think we have to be really careful and really mindful about having those common expectations so that regardless of what teacher a student has, they can be assured that they're going to get common curriculum and common learning expectations per grade level.
Yeah, I appreciate your comment and, you know, as you said, this, this was to be a summary of what happened in those 10 weeks when we were forced into this quickly. We did survey the families, I'll say, we didn't get as many responses from the families as we'd like, it was only open for about a week. And, you know, the survey responses were mixed in terms of some families being super happy and they got, they felt like they got, you know, plenty of support and others, you know, echoing a bit of what you're talking about in terms of wishing that they had more. You know, all to be negotiated in terms of minimum common expectations with, with Hatta. And agree that, you know, we can do better in terms of student-to-teacher contact time. I will say what we are planning right now involves the students being in class two days a week. And so the amount of Zooming and the amount of online instruction that will happen, because the teachers will be teaching one cohort of kids two days and another cohort of kids the next two days. And then possibly a, a day of meeting, planning, getting all that material up for students to do on their distance learning days. So what we're going to be looking at, hopefully, when we reopen in the fall, is going to look very different than 100% distance learning. I, I hear you though, and, and we'll take this back and, you know, have more conversations about minimum common expectations in terms of, you know, what happens particularly in the distance learning environment. And I'll say it's a worry of mine when our teachers are going to be with kids four days a week and those other two days, how they're, you know, how we're going to manage supporting students in their distance learning when their teachers are working with 12 to 15 kids in the classroom. So, you know, we're going to need to be creative and think, and think through that. And I think all that's going to come out in this next couple of weeks as we negotiate with the union. But I appreciate your, I appreciate your concerns and your suggestions.
Thank you.
Yeah, other comments or questions?
I just want to, I just want to echo what RS Lee said, I have a had two different experiences with my grandchildren and and I have a real concern about that kind of instruction for the kids, so. I'm glad that you are cognizant of that and because, because our first, our mission is education for children. We have to keep that in the forefront. We, that's, that's our job, is to deliver that.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think it's worth saying, and I mentioned the, the difference too of the 10 weeks that we were thrown into this and little to no planning for our staff members that have their own families and we're providing childcare in their own home. And I think that, you know, just to be completely open and honest and blunt, I think that some of that differentiation that we saw in student-to-teacher contact time may have been because of their own family situation and their own, you know, mental health and other things going on. You know, we have a little more time for planning here, but, you know, again, and what we're communicating with, with, that we're, you know, we're back to work, right? And I'll, again, speak to this both as an educator and as a parent myself and starting to think through, okay, what am I going to do with my fifth grader when I'm back to work full-time and we're not sheltering in place? And that, I think, is going to bring a different complexity to what we do and how we treat each other as professionals.
This is an action item that we need approval of.
Erin, I commend you for somehow getting a lot of information into not very big boxes. I like how they, they start off the whole document saying, please succinctly state, but then also succinctly summarize. It was like, tell us everything and use as few words as possible and you did that very well. It's very thorough and somehow fits in the blue boxes. Any other questions or concerns about this operations report?
Just one second, no, I think we're.
Comments, okay.
So I move, we accept the Erin's report.
Her report, thank you, Judy. Do I have a second? Jamie's peace signing a second, Jamie's muted, are you supposed to be muted?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, if you mute yourself.
I did, I had to mute myself, we had some excessive noise. Well, and then I had to yell to tell them to be quiet.
Yes, I've been there tonight.
By Jamie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous passing. Thank you again, Erin.
I think, Erin.
Yes, thank you, I apologize for not being present physically and just speaking.
Little guy.
Happy birthday.
Enjoy it.
Really? Okay, attend to temporary deferral of Foss Creek School payment.
So as you know, the city of Hillsburg bought the Foss Creek School Campus from us a number of years ago. And as part of their repayment plan or their payment plan for it, we, we get around, I think, $165,000 a year. They approached me at the beginning of the COVID crisis, initially, actually, just looking for a break on the payment because of the loss of tax revenue in town. This is paid, I think, out of TOT taxes and, which is the hotel occupancy tax. Because it's, yeah, it's funding the recreation department, right?
Right. Yeah.
They had this decrease of tax revenue and didn't know how they were going to weather that and said, you know, can we take a one-year deferral and allow you, you know, we'll pay you back over the next two or three years? And I initially, this is money we can't use for operations, it goes into facilities. So, you know, we have enough money to get by for the next few years in facilities, so I didn't see it as a big issue. So I said, you know, we're, we're game to talk about that. And then they had this idea, and Erin alluded to this earlier, to potentially offer childcare on the days when we're not, you know, when the cohort of kids are not in class with us. And so what they want to do, their intent is to take this $165,000 and apply it towards the cost of childcare on the days that we don't have students, you know, in our, in our, in our classes. They would be able, hopefully, to maintain the same cohort of kids, so the kids wouldn't intermingle with a different group of kids on those off days. So they'd work with us on that, we would put ACIS funds in, et cetera, et cetera. There's still a large funding gap to overcome that we've got to figure out, but this will certainly help it. So it's a way, A, to help the city out a little bit on their loss of tax revenue and B, for us to potentially offer expanded childcare on off days when, if we're in a hybrid schedule. So, and you have the formal letter from the city there requesting before you as an action item for consideration tonight.
The letter does not contemplate the daycare aid, really, it's just the deferral of the rent.
Yeah, they're just asking for the deferral right now, but I do know in the last conversation, their intent was to potentially put it over towards the daycare. And even so, us deferring this allows them to offer more services to the community.
Oh, yeah.
Whether it's related to kids or not, so it is something we can, that really doesn't endanger or hurt the district at all. Because again, it's facilities maintenance money that was.
So you said that they would repay it over a couple of years in the future instead of just adding it to the end?
Yes, I asked for that. I didn't want to just defer it way down the road.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, concerns, anything from the public?
I appreciate that collaboration, you know, to offer something for our families who, whose parents hopefully will be at work, you know, go back to work if they can and still have somewhere wonderful to put their children.
Yeah, let's hope we can, we can pull it off. Like I said, there's still a, a funding gap, but it would be quite a service to, to be able to offer in this environment, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So shall I make a motion to approve?
Please.
All right, I've moved to approve the temporary deferral of the Foss Creek School payment.
Second from Judy and this is an action, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Transportation update, 10 to T, Debbie.
Debbie? She's muted.
Karen, will you put up that slide, please?
Oh, that's right.
So I'm bringing forward, I would like to suspend transportation fees for home-to-school transportation for 2021. I think because of COVID and uncertainties and the help that the community needs, the idea that students could be home days a week and possibly need transportation to childcare, we could help in that capacity. Ridership has been going down the last couple of years, this could help that. And honestly, we don't really bring in much revenue, the amount of time we spend and the amount of effort that goes into this, this year we've received $12,000. and the amount of effort that goes into this, this year we've received $12,000. And honestly, we might be in a situation next year where a child might be standing there to get on a bus and we might not be able to put them on the bus if we can't have the social distancing that's required with the amount of kids we have on the bus. So there's some unknowns that I feel like it would really, really help the community and parents if we suspended fees for transportation next year.
Very nice.
All of you too.
I love that.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Good.
I agree. So do we need any more discussion? Can we just get a message and make this happen?
Yep. Good idea.
I'll move that we do whatever it's been recommended.
The recommendation.
Thank you.
Spending fees.
Thank you.
Second from RS Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
Child nutrition fee.
Is our food service rates. And it's just, it's board policy that I bring them forward each year and I'm recommending to change nothing, keep the rates the same. We don't even know what food service is going to look like in the fall. So for now, I would like to keep everything the same as it is.
And I assume, are we just like losing a ton of money because we're still doing lunches almost every day, but nobody's paying for anything? Or do we expect this to be covered by some of the COVID?
I expect some of it to be covered by COVID. I've been filing summer claims. We go on a different plan and it's called summer food. And I haven't had any reimbursements come through yet, but I'm hoping that will be reimbursed at a pretty good rate. Definitely an increase in cost.
I mean, it's absolutely something we must continue. I mean, there's no, no other option. But I'm just curious what that's doing to our food service that we always just supplement anyway.
Yeah.
And we're actually, we're actually hand-delivering meals to rural homes in the community as well, where they can get here to get the food.
Which is awesome. Okay. We take an action. Yes, we have to agree to not raise rates, keep the rates as they are. And yeah, who the heck knows how that's all going to look. Do I have a motion?
RS Lee, all second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Oh, that was it. Quattroquicrocky.
Can I, can I interrupt really quick? I'm sorry. There was, we have, Robin Doherty asked a question. How do we let parents know that busing is free? Are we good?
I'll move forward with that. I just needed to get it approved first.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then also, Ever Flores had a comment that was actually meant to be for the COVID report. I was interpreting it as a future question more so than what the COVID report was about. So I'm going to go ahead and let him ask the question.
Is Erin?
About the operations report.
Okay. I'm mute Erin too.
Okay.
Not there. She's there.
Okay.
And let me go back and read it.
So this is the operations report.
Could you ask this question? Oh, how would you reclassify students who did not take the LPAC for this year? You know, because you did talk a little bit about our EL kids and.
Sure. Yeah, I can speak to that. So it looks like the CDE and Governor Newsom are going to work together to allow for a summative, to allow us to give the summative LPAC sometime in August and September to students that we choose. So if we have kids that have met all other criteria for ARFAP except for the LPAC, it looks, we just got an email from ETS about a week ago saying, get ready for it. We think that they're going to allow it. So we're, we're fingers crossed. I've communicated that to our site principals. They have their lists ready to go. So we know exactly who we want to have take that. Remember that the junior high did get the LPAC done completely. So we will get LPAC scores from junior high. So we've got just a handful of high school students and then at FMC and HES between the two schools, possibly up to 30 students that may be administered that summit at LPAC. So we're hopeful. Yeah.
Thank you, Erin. Sorry about that, everybody.
No worries. It's complicated.
Me having a hard time keeping track of.
I know.
News here. Okay, back to QKA, master planning agreement.
Yeah, so we, we actually do not have a master plan for all of our campuses. We did preliminary master planning back in 2010, maybe 11, the first go-round of bonds when there was a different superintendent. And we followed that plan for the high school and junior high, but we have never really planned for HES and FMC. And we need to revisit our plan for the secondary schools. And so we would like to proceed with that. It's actually a statutory requirement by the state. It will cost, but it comes out of, again, it comes out of the maintenance facility side of a budget. It doesn't come out of anything that costs out of the general fund that could be applied towards classrooms or teachers or anything like that. So we are proposing to continue our work with QKA, who has served us well. And we have a longstanding relationship with and actually completed the master planning last go-round at the secondary sites.
I think this is really important to have plans for maintenance so we don't have horrible surprises because thinking ahead. So I think this is always prudent.
I agree.
Yep. I move that we accept that. Is it an action?
Yes.
I'll second.
Any other comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The Education Protection Account Resolution Number 2037, Item 10 to W. Debbie.
This resolution is just, it's mandated to do it every year. We just have to say how much money we got from the EPA and how we spent it. And we spend it, well, we had a separate pot for the charter school and the district, and we spend all of it on salaries. It can't go to administrative salaries. We spend it all on teacher salaries. And there's an attachment there that shows you, it's just a, a one line. It all goes to one place. And this resolution is just approving that. You have seen it and that those figures are correct.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
It just seems odd. That seems weird that the EPA money would go to salaries.
What's EPA not anybody else? It's, it's not the EPA, EPA. It's.
Education Protection Account.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. You're right. I'm sorry. I'm getting tired. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm like, what are they out there like doing science? Everybody's doing science on like a Saturday? Sorry.
Getting rummy.
Sorry.
I moved to approve.
Do we have a motion?
I moved to approve.
Second.
And this is the resolution, Karen?
Yes. So let's see. Trustee Velazquez.
Aye.
President Del Rey.
Aye.
Trustee Kiff.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Mistle.
Aye.
And Trustee Roma Flores.
Aye.
Thank you.
I really did read the agenda. Sorry. It's just at the moment, it felt really odd.
And it was like EPA.
Yeah, it was great when I read it on Friday, but all of a sudden now it's the EPA. I don't know.
Item 10 to X, Resolution 2038, Declaration of Indefinite Salaries.
This is just, Ed Code requires us to file this resolution for indefinite salaries. It just makes it so people can get paid if they were to turn in a time card or have paid besides their regular pay. So if they had retroactive pay or any other kind of pay. It's just a mandated thing we do every year. A resolution, I should say.
I'll move adoption of Resolution 2038.
I'll second.
A resolution, Karen, please on the vote.
All right. Trustee Velazquez.
Aye.
President Del Rey.
Aye.
Trustee Kiff.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Mistle.
Aye.
And Trustee Roma Flores.
Aye.
Thank you.
We are in violation of our own board policy and need to hold a vote.
Oh, it's three hours.
So we can get this done just for a quick resolution. So.
I move to extend 15 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Wow, it's different when it's not.
I know. I just.
Dark out.
I'm like, are we over?
I don't know, but I'm hungry.
Hold on.
Resolution 2039, Authorization to Make Budget Transfers Between Fund Balances and Expenditures at Close of Year.
Right. You guys approved this a couple of weeks ago, but that was for the 1920 year. And in the past, we've always done it at the end of the year for the current year. I'm filing this for the 2021 year because I want to be ahead. So we, I don't know, I want to. So I'm asking for you to approve the resolution to make budget transfers.
I approve resolution. I move for approving Resolution 2039.
Second.
Resolution, Karen?
All right. Trustee.
We have to say all in favor first, right?
Oh, oh, yes.
No, it's the resolution.
Motion in a second. Sorry.
Trustee Velazquez.
Aye.
President Del Rey.
Aye.
Trustee Kiff.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Mistle.
Aye.
And Trustee Roma Flores.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 2042, Temporary Transfer of Funds from the County Treasurer.
This is an important one. This is if cash gets low, we can borrow from the county. Allowed to borrow up to 85% of your property tax revenue that you predict it's coming in. So I've upped it this year to 12 million. We won't need it, but we could go even further beyond that.
We hope. Yeah.
And this would be.
This in the past as well.
Yes.
This would be, things were delayed if our payment was delayed for property taxes?
Yes.
Yeah. So remember Governor Newsom is allowing next year's property taxes to be paid late without penalty.
Right.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Judy and Mike and Resolution, Karen.
Okay. Trustee Velazquez.
Aye.
President Del Rey.
Aye.
Trustee Kiff.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Mistle.
Aye.
And Trustee Roma Flores.
Aye.
All right.
Resolution 2040, Authorization to Make Temporary Transfers Between Funds at Close of Year.
This resolution is to transfer funds from one fund to the other. Like when we do a contribution for special ed or cafeteria funds, if we have to borrow from the bond. That's only for June 30th at the end of the year. Every fund has to be positive cash. And this allows us to do that.
It's tomorrow.
Because I just did it a couple of days ago for this year. I borrowed it and then on July 3rd, I'll put it all back.
I moved to approve Resolution 2040.
Second.
Resolution, Karen?
Okay. Trustee Velazquez.
Aye.
President Del Rey.
Aye.
Trustee Kiff.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Mistle.
I just want to comment, that's trust, Debbie. Aye.
And Trustee Roma Flores.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's such a weird thing to have to do when you just put it all back again. I know.
Yeah.
Like, right? It's just like, anyway, whatever. Final item on the agenda officially, Resolution 2041, Signing Authority.
This just gives Chris, Erin, and myself authority to sign contracts for the next school year.
I move to approve.
Second.
Give it to RS Lee.
Okay.
RS Lee, second, okay. Resolution.
All right. Trustee Velazquez.
Aye.
President Del Rey.
Aye.
Trustee Kiff.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Mistle.
Aye.
And Trustee Roma Flores.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, folks. That was a lot of items. That was a seven-page agenda. In case you had counted the number of pages. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to those of you still standing in the audience here, maybe not standing, sitting, still tuned in. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you.
I see you in August.
Do we get to make comments? I have a quick comment, if I may. I just wanted to congratulate the students and I can't remember the day. Help me out if you would, Chris. The protest, Friday, the protest demonstration wasn't as big as I had hoped. But I do appreciate the principal holiday helping the students organize that. And I'm just glad that our, our students in our community feel that they have have the freedom, if you will, to, to voice what they think is right. So I just want to say that.
Thank you, everybody. We do not need to adjourn to closed session, correct?
Oh.
Thank you. And everybody, have a lovely evening. Thank you to Karen for keeping that all organized. Please coordinate, if you haven't already, with Karen about signing documents that need to be signed because there are deadlines tomorrow.
Yes.
Thanks.